Berbergill.
You're muted, Kim, if you tried to say something. Here. Thank you. All right, so we are returning. We've done a roll call. Would everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Do we have that all set up?
Get a share screen.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Sorry, my picture is hiding.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So now we have our mayor's announcements. I don't know if Christine is still working on the Facebook post. Maybe we'll just swap these two things around and we will start with our proclamation and we'll do the Home for the Holidays Award after. I have asked our new council member Molton to read the proclamation for National Mentoring Month. And I am so happy to ask her because she, as the director of North Star Quest Camp for Girls, one of my favorite organizations in the whole world, was a mentor for my daughter at a time when she really needed it. So I absolutely value the importance of mentoring and would like to invite you to read the proclamation.
Thank you so much, Mayor Seaman. I really appreciate that mentors are so important for kids of all walks of life. So, a City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of National Mentoring Month. Whereas this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast celebrates 52 years of service to the youth in Humboldt County. Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast recognizes that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success, currently, many of Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast participants are Eureka residents. And now therefore, I, council member Katie Molton, on behalf of the Eureka City Council and Mayor Susan Seaman, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Mentoring Month. And thanks all of our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. We also call on residents to help close the gap between availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a big brother or big sister.
Um, do, there are a lot of people on this call, so I can't see them all. Has Florence Parks gotten in yet to receive this? Florence, are you out there? You can just unmute yourself if you are. So I know she was planning to be here. And she checked in with me earlier today as well. So what I'm going to do is move on to our next item, which is the Home for the Holidays. Hopefully Christine Tyson is ready for that presentation. And can you just watch for Florence? And when she gets in, we'll have her receive this when she gets a chance.
Definitely, Mary. And I also wanted to add that we're live streaming this event on Facebook, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Another good option. All righty, so Christine Tyson, are you free to give the Home for the Holidays report?
Yes, I am here and ready. And thank you for having me. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome to our new council members, council member Molton and Bauer. It's wonderful to be able to be in front of you all tonight. I'm here to tell you that we had a successful holiday season with many successes for Eureka this year. But the one I'm here to talk to you about tonight is the outcome for our Home for the Holidays decorating contest, our first of many. And we are already planning on this being an annual tradition. First, I want to thank all of our participants and our community members who are able to take part in this tradition, and we are excited to start planning next year already. We had 38 houses register this last year, and we had just about 987 votes come in. Out of those total votes, our outstanding winner came in with about 18% of those votes in total. And we had a huge positive response from the community for holding this event towards the city, for providing such a great experience during the season for their families to enjoy. But the most exciting ones to read were for the winners of this 2020 year decorating contest, which explained much gratitude towards them for bringing such joy to our city during this time. And again, I appreciate all of our entire community, and I'm so glad that the City of Eureka could bring some joy during our holiday season last year. And with that, I'm actually going to turn it right back over to Mayor Seaman to present the mayor's award.
So I is very happy. Woodlab Designs has created an award for our winners, which are Kristin and Dale Walbert. They live at 3333 Harrison Avenue. And if you didn't get a chance to see their display, it was based on The Nightmare Before Christmas. And the thing I think that made their yard so appealing, besides the fact that it was just so, it was such a good likeliness of the movie, which has become a classic for many people around the holiday season, is that all of their things were made from, they were all made by the homeowners. They were fantastic, and it was a ton of fun. You could tell they had a ton of fun, and I understand they do it for all of the holidays. I just heard today from my husband that two different people on two different occasions came up to him and talked about the Home for the Holidays event and said that they decorated even though they weren't planning to, which was really fun and sort of out of nowhere and perfectly timed for them to tell him that today. But what I like to say is that some of these were fabulously elaborate, but every single person who even put up a single string of lights and just helped to brighten up what was a very dark season when a lot of people were making a lot of sacrifices, maybe not seeing the people they loved. And they really channeled that energy and that spirit of the season into their decorations. So thank you, everybody, for participating, and I am looking forward to seeing what happens in the future. So thank you. We will deliver your award tomorrow, and we also have a certificate for you as well.
Thank you so much.
I will tell you that Kristin and her family are here on the call. Kristin and Dale are here.
Yay. Please feel free to add anything you want, Kristin.
No, we just really, really enjoy doing this for everyone, and it's something that brought people out of their house. And, you know, my husband built a bench so that people could sit down and take pictures. And it's just something we really enjoy.
Thank you. That was a very fun thing to do this year when we're lacking in a lot of other activities. So thank you for being part of making a brighter community, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Pam.
There, I just forwarded Florence a Zoom link. I believe she should be joining us momentarily, but she hasn't signed in yet, so.
Okay, so we're just waiting for her to sign in. And I will, I'll catch up with something else first, and then when she gets in, we'll talk about that. At the last meeting, we did talk about traffic safety. And I wanted to let everybody know that we are continuing to move forward with the Traffic Safety Task Course, which we discussed at the last meeting. And but something I thought was interesting was the day of the meeting, there was an accident, two-person accident on the 15th. There was a death on the 16th on Highway 299, one on Myrtle Town on the 17th, one on Singly Road on the 18th, one on the Highway 36 on the 20th. And then we just had one again today south of Red Crest. So this is truly a county-wide issue. It's not just Eureka. But it really reinforced that it is important that we start thinking about traffic safety. And so I wanted to let you know that we have talked with Caltrans, Board of Supervisors, H-COG, Neighborhood Groups, the Sheriff's Department, the Center for Responsible Transportation Priorities, CHP, RCIA, and, Miles doesn't even know this yet, somebody from the Samoa Drive Strip. Because even people who like to drive fast think it's important to drive safely. So we will continue to let you know what's going on currently. We are looking for facilitator for the task force, where we will create a campaign to promote traffic safety as a shared community value. And we'll hopefully create a cultural shift from one of, one where we talk about collisions as something that happened to other people and really accepting it as a responsibility of all of us to practice defensive driving habits. So we're moving forward, and I will continue to update you. Councilmember Bergell?
Oh, I didn't hear. Is there a member from our Transportation Safety Commission on this committee?
Yes, there will be. I have asked staff to provide, we have, we'll have somebody from EPD, our Public Works Department, and the same Transportation Safety Commission, and I am getting a recommendation for that person to follow up with them. Also, and this is just one part of sort of the city's look at this, we will be updating and will be looking at and updating our transportation safety plan through the Transportation Safety Commission. So, and this will be a more holistic look at transportation safety, but the task force will focus on this one campaign to try to get us all thinking about how important this is. All right, do we have Florence Parks on yet?
Yes, she is just coming into the room. So Florence, you should be here. I'll let you call on her, Mary.
If you have never met Florence before, you will be in for a treat to hear her today, and I highly recommend meeting her in person. She serves on the California Mentorship Board, as well as doing great things here in our community. So Florence, you will get your proclamation from me later, but I would just like to invite you to say anything you want about mentoring.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you and the Eureka Council for having us on this month. We're so excited to share the gift of mentoring with our community. And we can't do that without great partners and collaboration, because we need to lift the voice of our young people and also the need for volunteer and great volunteerism. So National Mentoring Month is a great opportunity for us to take advantage and leverage this time so that we can be closer to mentoring and also just remind ourselves how we've all been mentored. So all of us have had someone who has helped us in some way, maybe not a formal mentor, but someone that has supported us, and we all need to pass that on. So Big Brothers Big Sisters is a great opportunity to formalize that for a lot of our youth that need additional supports. More, there is a, there is a study that has been conducted that shows that our children, one out of every four will grow up to the age of 18 without a mentor. And we call that the mentoring gap, and that's what makes our work so relevant and important. So we just thank you because there's no, I mean, mentors that spend the time mentoring know the effects of the work. And also, the youth that have been mentored are in the 90 percentile going to pass forward that mentorship that they've been given. So thank you so much for this time and exposure for mentoring and the great work we get to do. And Susan, thank you especially because you lead by example in your mentoring, the youth of our community, and also so many of us. So we really appreciate you especially.
Thank you. Can I just ask, did I, do I not remember that a child ideally would have like five mentors in their, in their life? Isn't that what's typical? And I could probably name a mine. I was so fortunate to think that there are kids that don't have any. Is really heartfelt. Some of the conversations that we're having tonight that are so difficult could probably be made less urgent if more people had great mentors when they were young.
So true. And so Susan, you reflected on five to thrive. So everyone needs a mentor, more is better. But in order for our children to really thrive in life and find their sparks in different areas, they need five positive adults throughout their life to do that.
So, and that is a great segue into our next presentation on the agenda, because I will bet you that the kids in the youth council that we're going to talk about probably have plenty of mentors, and you can definitely see the benefits of that. So I would like to invite Program Coordinator Robin Pressler and Youth Council Coordinator Jenkins to talk to us about our youth council and the work that they have done in the past year. And we have been so happy to have a youth council this year. It was not as robust as we had hoped, because it's been a very weird year. And yet they persevered and did some great things. So why don't you tell us about it?
Hi, good evening, City Council, and congratulations to the new members. It's so nice to see you all. I'm Sierra Dillon. It was Sierra Jenkins, but I got married, so I'm Sierra Dillon now. I'm Eureka's Youth Council Coordinator, and I work closely with Robin Prasker from Eureka's Community Services Division, who is also here. So we first started recruitment for youth council in November and December 2019, looking for local youth ages 14 to 18. Then in January 2020, we selected four members. The program was originally going to be for five months. It was going to be a spring and a fall term. But obviously, when COVID hit, we had to take a pause and kind of rework some things. Unfortunately, one of our members, Gwendolyn Parsons, she did move during that time, but we thank her for the time that she did get to spend with us. So we have three remaining, Christina Smith, Stella Saba, and Tristan Green, who have been with us now for one full year. So good job, guys, sticking with it. And for those of you that may not know, and to the new members that probably haven't heard a lot about this program yet, the Eureka Youth Council program is designed to encourage Eureka teens to become interested in city government by providing them with real-world opportunities and letting their voice be heard. The youth experienced unique ways of learning about local government while representing Eureka's youth population. They did a lot of research for their projects and provided valuable input to the city council. So originally, of course, you know, the youth council was at City Hall, and they were seeing everything and feeling it. And one of our members got to go up on the dais and present her findings for one of the projects. So obviously, again, when COVID hit, that changed a lot of things, but the youth, they still showed up to our Zoom meetings, and they still did everything that we asked of them. So we're very, very proud of them, and we put together a little farewell video. So I'm going to share my screen so you can see that. All righty. Okay, and it has sound, too. So here we go.
Hello, I'm Stella, and I'm a senior at Eureka High School. Serving on Youth Council has taught me a lot. I got to learn firsthand how a city council system works and how decisions are made at the local level. Being in Youth Council has shown me how important it is to be civically engaged. Everyone has an opportunity to have their voice heard by council. Average citizens can be entitled to the decisions made by the government when they choose to participate. If you're a teen who's interested in political science, then I highly recommend that you participate in Youth Council. Thank you.
Hey there. My name's Christina Smith. I'm currently a senior at Eureka High, and I've been fortunate enough to serve as one of your 2020 Youth Council representatives. This year, in hindsight, was a year of changes, but also adaptations. For me, the Youth Council has opened doors I've never seen coming. With the help of our incredible supervisors, we've learned community building, collaboration, and most fortunately for this presentation, addressing viewers like you. If you've ever been a teen who's wanted to go beyond that high school position as a leader, a senior agent, or a powerful business executive in a pantsuit, we are the place for you. You'll be the voice, or well, link rather, between our government officials and what your peers need. If this sounds like you, I implore you, Youth Council is absolutely the door you'll want to open.
Hi, I'm Tristan Green. I go to Eureka High, and I'm in 11th grade. During my time with Youth Council, I learned a lot about the inner workings of politics in Eureka. I got a chance to know the council members. I got to learn about the laws and the day-to-day politics, and would have liked to be a public official. I enjoyed the camaraderie I had with my fellow Youth Council members, and working on projects together was especially fun. I definitely know more about the city I live in now than I did when I first joined the council.
So we asked them to make a video, to come up with something and make a video on their own that we could develop into a recruitment video. So those recordings that they took of themselves and wrote themselves, those are going to go into a recruitment video. But Robin and I thought we'd just go ahead and add them in there now to their little farewell video, because they were so adorable. So we also have some, we have some awards. So I guess I will call them out one by one, if that's okay with everybody. And then the person that I call out, so whether it be Stella, Christina, or Tristan, if you guys just want to say a couple of last words after I present you with your award, feel free. So Robin and I got these beautiful plaques made. They have the new city logo, their names. And it says, "In appreciation for your time and effort to make a difference in our community as a Eureka Youth Council member." So the first one is going to Christina Smith. Christina, do you want to say anything?
Yes. Hi. My computer is glitching a bit, but I would just say thank you so much to everybody who's been able to support Youth Council this year. It has meant the world to us and the other students at our school as well for having a voice in local government. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Christina. You're amazing. Great job. And next up, we have Stella Saba.
Thank you.
I can see the clapping.
Thank you so much. I really wish my camera was working. It's really, it's not right now. But I'm so thankful for my time on Teen Council, and definitely in the future, I'm going to be participating in whatever local politics I can. Thank you.
Great job, Stella. And last but not least, we have Tristan Green. Woo, Tristan, are you there?
Thank you, everyone, for letting us have this program and learning about the City Council and its members, and especially all the politics and the laws in Eureka. I learned so much over the past year, so thank you.
Great job, Tristan. And you know, we learned things from you guys, too, Robin and I. And I know we really missed being able to see you guys in person and play the bonding games that we would play and all the interactive stuff we would do. I'm sure you guys were sick of all my PowerPoints, but, but we really love being with you guys and being mentors for you. And if you ever need anything, let us know. If you want to put us as a reference on a resume for a job or something like that, we're here for you. So great job, and we will get you these beautiful plaques. We will make sure that they get safely to your homes. And then lastly, for next term, we plan to release applications for the next term in April and to have the program launch in June. So what we're going to do is take the next few months to continue to develop the program and evaluate and reflect on our first term. And kind of going forward, seeing where we're at at that time, is everything still going to be on Zoom? May things be opening back up? We didn't plan for it originally to be 100% virtual. So we're going to kind of see what we can do to ramp it up and make it better for the next term. And if we have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Or if you guys just want to give a shout out to any of the Youth Council before they're gone off to college and grown. So before we have any questions or comments from council, I also want to give a shout out to you, Sierra and Robin, for helping to develop a very well-thought-out plan and then throwing it in there and figuring out something completely different when the world changed around you. So this was a first year not to be forgotten, and the students did a great job adapting with that as well as adapting everything else they were going through in their life. So thank you for that, and thank you to you, too. Does anybody else from council have anything they want to add? Councilmember Bauer and then Bergell?
Yeah, I just, I think that's a great program. I want to thank you, Sierra and Robin, for leading it. And I hope the Youth Council continues to be involved in the future. We need you guys involved in politics. We need youth involved in politics and their community. So thank you, and thank you for the great presentation. It was really fun.
Councilmember Bergell?
I, too, just want to thank you all for being a part of the city this last several months. And you know, just watching you guys this, over this time period, has really given me hope for our future. So I really appreciate the growth that you have made, and I appreciate Robin and Sierra. You guys have done a stellar job with these guys, and I hope you just continue to move forward. You know, I think you have to be 18 to run for City Council, and some seats will become available in a couple of years. So keep that in mind. If you're not back from, if you're back from college, you're going to HSU. But just know that you're appreciated.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thank you so much, Youth Council members and staff, for really bringing, being the sort of pilot year to bring this back. I know I've heard many times about how there used to be a youth representative on the dais in our council meetings, and just heard great things about that program from back in the day. And I'm so glad we've been able to revive it. And I wanted to say that I really appreciated the input you had on the project that you came and spoke about. And I wanted to say that I really appreciated the input you had on the project that you came and spoke about at our meeting in our in-person session about the park. So that was really cool to see you taking such a deep dive into that and coming up with recommendations that were really valuable because I think my use of parks is probably really different from you and your peers' use of parks. So thanks for weighing in on that.
Councilmember Castellano.
Yeah, just continuing to echo the appreciation. It was really nice to have your enthusiasm and perspective on politics and just appreciate that. You know, I kind of imagine the role you play in your high school and in your community of peers. And so thank you for the leadership you've provided here as well as in the rest of your lives. And thanks to Sierra and Robin for facilitating such a great part of Eureka.
Any other comments? Thank you guys so much. Keep in touch when you move on, go to college. Let us know what's happening with you and we will look forward to following your adventures into the world. And moving on to the next report, I'm gonna kind of keep the mentorship theme going and say that mentorship doesn't end when you're a child. Our CAPE program has a lot of fabulous opportunities to mentor people of all ages. And we have Jeff Davis here, the program coordinator, to give us an update and talk about some things that have been going on with him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yes, I'm here tonight to present an update on the CAPE and the Uplift programs. And I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation and I would like to share my screen. Alright, so we'll start off with the Community Access Project for Eureka or CAPE. So the Community Access Project for Eureka was developed by the City of Eureka's Community Services Department, actually this Parks and Recreation Department back in 2015 and has since transferred over to the Economic Development Department. But it still provides the same mission of providing access to quality-of-life programs and opportunities for all members of our community regardless of their living situation or income. And when the program was initially developed, whoops, uh oh. It was really focusing on a lot of youth programs. There were scholarships for our Hoopster, our city-run Hoopsters team. We have literacy and nutrition programming that were available for folks. And then also transportation was provided for a lot of different summer camps and a lot of other youth programming. We provided some community classes, a lot of them involve arts. We have ceramics classes, painting, drawing, music, writing. And we've done podcast classing, classes, quite a few, quite a variety. We've collaborated with the Sequoia Park Zoo and offered the Family Nature Club, which is an amazing program for youth in the area. There's some photos there of yoga at the zoo, which was a big hit. And it was really a time for parents and for their children to come to the zoo. Most of these folks wouldn't have opportunities to visit the zoo without this program and really explore nature together as a family. And it was a huge success. And I think Kate Baldwin with the zoo was, had a huge part to play in that program and she did a fantastic job and I just want to give her a huge, huge shout out. We've also collaborated with some other organizations. We collaborated with the Humble Bay Keepers to offer Rock the Bay. Where we take kids out onto the bay and do kayaking tours. And we, CAPE also, has also provided referrals to the summer camps that the Parks and Recreation Division ran, the Camp Cooper, which is an environmental camp. And as you can see from the photos there, those kids had a blast. More recently, we've developed an Inclusion Works program and we're able to go out and provide a great experience for adults with disabilities, doing some behind-the-scenes tours of local businesses, going out and getting some paid, hands-on experience with the city. They're out there beautifying the boardwalk, planting some flowers, going around town and cleaning up Old Town and the downtown area. And the Humble Bay Keepers also allowed us to, they provided some opportunities for us to go out in the Medicaid and take a tour of the bay. We also hold an annual, CAPE also holds an annual Halloween costume drive where costumes are donated and then provided to families in need. And that's actually a program that we were still able to do this year with some modifications during COVID. And so the kids definitely had access to a variety of great costumes. We also do a, CAPE also runs a winter holiday program where the kids and families have a chance to meet with Santa. I think the first year we did this was 2016 at the Serenity Inn where every single family with children were provided with gifts for the kids. And then also every single room was provided with a crock pot and either a ham or turkey dinner and a recipe book for nutrition in an in setting. There's also a photo of the Grinch at one of our literacy events. And with COVID this year, we weren't able to do quite the same winter program just due to safety precautions, but we were still able to really step up and help those in need this year. I just want to give a huge, huge shout out to all the folks that made that happen this year. Thirty-nine local children in need were kind of adopted by city staff members and were provided gifts and presents. And we had some help from the North Pole and Santa and one of his helpers came down and delivered the presents to children in a variety of locations. Some at emergency shelters and others in transitional housing. I want to give another huge, huge shout out to Kristen Raymond. You could see in one of those photos doing the wrapping and did an amazing job. Christine Tyson, Swan, and Selena also stepped up and did, went over and beyond their part to wrap these presents and really help coordinate this whole thing. Like I said, 39 children were provided with gifts and a visit from Santa. And during that time, I was fortunate enough to be there and the kids were just thrilled. There were, Christmas carols were being sung and there were socially distant, safe photos taken with Santa from more than six feet away. And as you can see, Santa and his helper were both wearing masks. So I just want to thank every single city staff member who signed up and purchased presents for those kids in need. And a huge shout out to Randy Wheeler for helping make all of this possible and for Kim as well. We also did a Shop of the Cop, I think for the fifth or sixth year now. And this year, we had to make some slight modifications. We referred some folks over to the Eureka Police Department and the, rather than going down to Target with the kids, the police officers showed up and delivered the presents in person and still had to have that great interaction with local youth. And then also, there's a, can't see the other photos here. But the local Rotary Club, the Old Town Rotary Club stepped up in a huge way and helped out one family that was, had a very rough year and really made their Christmas huge. It was first Christmas that this family had together in a number of years. And really, the Old Town Rotary went over above and beyond and really helped this family in need. And then another local business, Polly Shaw Insurance Company, adopted another family and really helped those in need. And so when, just after a really rough year, to see this community come together and really help out so many folks, so many kids during the holidays was really a special event. And this is something that we definitely plan on continuing going into the future. Alright, so that was a brief kind of presentation on what CAPE has been up to. And I'm gonna kind of switch gears and talk a little bit about Uplift Eureka, which is a program of CAPE. Uplift Eureka is a program that started in 2018 and it's really designed to help connect community members experiencing homelessness with resources and services and help them fulfill their goals and obtain whatever their objective may be, whether that's employment or housing or obtaining health insurance. What each person is unique and each person has a different path and has a different set of goals and objectives. And this Uplift program wants to help them obtain their goals. So one of the components of the Uplift Eureka program is the Job Skills Training Program. This is a great program that helps community members gain experience. There's hands-on training, there's, we do beautification projects, we do, there's trail maintenance, a number of different things going around, doing some, cleaning up the city property all around town. Old Town, Downtown, Henderson Center, just kind of all hotspots around the town that's on city property. And really, it's a great way for these folks to boost their resumes, make them more competitive when they're entering the job market. But then also, it's a huge confidence builder for folks when you're out there doing these beautification projects and community members come up and say thank you. That goes a real long way. It's more than just a simple thank you. It's really, it makes a huge impact. It boosts a lot of our participants' confidence and really brings them back into society in a way where a lot of them feel isolated. And so this is, we've had a huge, huge success with this Job Skills Training Program. And with COVID, we had to modify, as you can see, where there's no more huddles and group photos. We've had to reduce the number of folks that go out at one time and ensure that the proper personal protective equipment is being used. We had reopened for a while with the, with the county-approved reopening plan. Since we moved into the purple tier though, we have temporarily suspended programming. We are running a, the Job Skills Training Crew also oversees a non-CRV glass recycling system where there are a few glass recycling receptacles around town where they are non-CRV glasses collected. So this is like your wine bottles and pickle jars, things that you wouldn't get CRV back from. Gone through, they're sorted and they're transported to a local aggregate yard where they're crushed and mixed with gravel and used as road base. So we're diverting some of these materials from the waste stream and we're also truly recycling these items and they are, these materials are finding new purpose as road base. This is a great program for a lot of the, a lot of our participants who are interested in pursuing a field. I think Recology has hired multiple folks from this program that have had this experience. And also Humboldt Waste Management Authority has hired one of our previous participants. And I have to tell you that this looks really good on a resume and this, the experience that these folks obtained on doing this work really, I think, was one of the things that helped them secure not just employment, but a career path. So even during COVID, we were, the Job Skills Training Crew was able to go out and make a difference. These are shots from the Henderson Center Eureka Street Art Festival back in August, July or August, I believe. And they were out cleaning up the streets of Henderson Center before, during, and after the art festival. And a lot of great, great art was made during that time. Another component of the Uplift Eureka program is Pathway to Payday. It's a four-day job workshop series held in collaboration with the Betty Quan Chin Day Center. It's a great opportunity. It's much more than a job fair. On the third day of this, so the first day, there's a lot of workshops and seminars, guest speakers. We have folks from the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, their Employment Training Division come down and talk about overcoming barriers. We have multiple other workshops that are, that are held. A lot of staff from multiple different departments come in and really pitch in to make this a truly city-wide effort and a community-wide effort also. And the second day, we hold mock interviews. And the third day is the day of the real interviews. So we have real employers hiring for interviewing for real jobs. It's almost like speed dating where you set up for 15-minute windows to go and conduct interviews. And participants can get seven, eight interviews in one afternoon. We've had huge success doing this and this is definitely a program that we want to continue doing. During COVID, we had to make some modifications. We did one Pathway to Payday over at the outside, at the Betty Quan Chin Day Center. And that was a great success. And then we also conducted another indoor Pathway to Payday a few months back with both of these events were, had the county reopening approval for these. And both of these events had a huge success from folks being, obtaining employment. And especially with these last two, during this pandemic, it's been so important to connect employers with employees. And there's, I think this, in particular, this Pathway to Payday program can be a life-changing event for a lot of the participants. There are folks that come in on day one and just are giving it a shot, they're giving it a try, they don't know what to expect. They really, talked to a lot of folks who just said, you know, I'm gonna give this a try, I don't expect anything, I can't get a job. I have gaps in employment history, I have a criminal background. And the transformation that is made in a few short days is truly amazing. And these folks do walk away with jobs and not just jobs, but career paths. And this last one in particular here at the, that was held at the Eureka Municipal Auditorium, we had mock interviewers from multiple different departments within the city. And it was just a great event and just amazing feedback all the way around. This is definitely an event that, once it is safe to continue, we plan on continuing this in the future. We have the co-pilot program where we have community volunteers that staff trains, recruits, and vets. And they become experts in local resources and they get teamed up one-on-one with a participant. And they act as a helping hand to guide these participants, these folks through all the different obstacles, all the different barriers that are in their path and help them obtain their goals. Some days, it's filling out paperwork, some days it's signing up for different appointments. And other days, it's just, the co-pilots are there just to listen and just to be someone there that cares, that truly is invested in individuals' future. And we've had great feedback from this program. This is another program that is temporarily suspended. We are not training new co-pilots at this time, but we do have co-pilots that have previously been trained that are continuing this. And this is another program that really supplements the other ones. And one of the great things about Uplift Eureka is you can pick and choose, participants pick and choose kind of what combination is right for them. And another component of this Uplift Eureka is our outreach team. They've done amazing things. They're down at the St. Vincent de Paul during free meal services every day. And see, we have a great relationship with the Eureka Police Department's CSSET team and the St. Vincent de Paul volunteers and staff. And our outreach workers are out seven days a week, connecting folks with services, connecting folks with resources, not just at St. Vincent de Paul, but out in the community, going to where these folks are and just letting them know that we're here to help and what can we do to help. Before the wet weather hit, we've done quite a few of these cleanups. We've collaborated with CSSET and gone in through all city-owned property, different green belts, different areas that have had a lot of trash and had participants come in and really make a huge difference. A lot of these areas are in wetland areas, sensitive habitat. And we've been able to remove quite a few hazardous materials. I mean, we're thousands and thousands of pounds of hazardous materials, including tires, batteries, all sorts of debris have been removed. And this is one, another great example of the CSSET and the Uplift team collaborating and really our participants really stepping up and helping out and helping out the community in a huge way. During the onset of this COVID outbreak, there were, we, the Uplift Eureka launched a there were, we, a lot of the uplift Eureka launched a mask donation program to ensure that community members had access to different, to face coverings. And over two thousand masks were donated by the by the community. And we just want to say that was such a generous outpouring and it's what I really thank every every single person who donated a mask. Some of them were store-bought, but a lot of them were homemade. And these go to the folks that would need the the facial covering to access food and different services at St. Vincent de Paul and and other day centers and in different outreach locations. And it was just a huge, huge outpouring. We've also, the uplift Eureka team also distributed quite a few little individual bottles of hand sanitizer during this time to make sure that that folks had everything they needed to to keep their hands, hands clean. And it wasn't just the hand sanitizer that was being distributed. There was a lot of information was was distributed also and is keeping folks well-informed about this fluid situation and all the changes. And once again, there was a huge, huge outpouring from from our community members and a big, big thank you for for all the masks. During this time, uplift Eureka staff also assisted with food distribution. The Food for People organization reached out and I believe they've had five or I think six food distribution drives since April and uplift Eureka was there, helping direct traffic. Uplift Eureka staff were out helping assemble these food boxes and making sure this was as smooth as possible. Some events were 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 very well-attended and overall thousands and thousands of meals were distributed between a couple of different locations. And then also, the Betty Quan Chin Homeless Foundation had a food distribution drive over at the Eureka Auditorium. That was also approved by the county reopening the partner program. And Betty, over at the Eureka Municipal Auditorium with uplift staff, handed out thousands of meals for both Thanksgiving and and Christmas and turkey and and turkey and ham dinners. I think I forgot to mention earlier when we, when the holiday gifts were were distributed, also this year, a meal was was delivered also either a turkey or or ham meal was delivered this year as well. And there's also a housing assistance program. Uplift Eureka has obtained a couple of grants to operate a rapid rehousing program. So it's it's for folks that are currently experiencing homelessness, that we follow the the Housing First Principles. We get folks into, you know, searching for housing, securing permanent housing as quickly as possible, and then providing supportive services to ensure that they are able to stabilize and sustain housing and prevent a slide back into homelessness. It's been quite, quite a bit of work even before the this outbreak. It was very difficult. There's obviously a housing shortage here, not just in in Eureka, but but statewide. And with this pandemic and the fires, it made it even more difficult. Want to give a huge shout out to our housing support specialist, housing support specialist Ethan Nazadi. He's done an amazing job. We're able to house quite a few folks. And we're, and that was through working with local property management companies and then also private landlords. So following the Housing First Principles, we don't look at what folks' incomes are. We don't look at their rental history. We don't look at oh, if they have evictions on their record or or any of those things. We don't look at if they have substance abuse issues. There's no barriers. You don't have to sign up for any other programs or anything. And and we're definitely following these Housing First Principles, but it's really challenging to find to find landlords that that kind of follow the same principles. And and that's what's what's really difficult. Housing, there's such a demand for housing when when rooms and when housing does become available. It's very competitive. And for folks with with lower incomes, it's really challenging to to secure that housing. And so I think that's it for that the slideshow, but I'd like to continue talking about housing just a little bit. I don't know how to unshare my screen. I'm done sharing my screen, but what I want to do is is really thank and and recognize one of our local residents here who's a landlord and also a property manager. His name is Mark Riley. I believe he's on today. He has he has multiple properties around around town and we've, he's kind of came to us and said, hey, we have some some housing opportunities. And he was truly and following these Housing First Principles. He wasn't looking, he didn't care what the folks made or what their their the worth of rental history was. He met with the folks and was really interested in giving folks opportunities and and second chances and and really giving folks opportunities when no one else would. And even during this pandemic, there were multiple folks were housed, thanks to Mr. Riley. And I just want to thank him so much for 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 that and.
Is that it? Did you go? Kind of trailed off. Are you open for questions or comments now?
I, yes, I am.
Hey, Jeff, do you care if I say a couple of words real quick?
I was going to invite you to do that. So please, Mr. Riley, love to hear from you.
I just, I just wanted to say that, like, I really appreciate what they do. There, there is a lot of need in our community and there are a lot of folks out there who, you know, are more concerned about, you know, other things. For me, it's about, I love this program. It's about giving people a hand up in life. It's about giving them an opportunity to, to, you know, do some things that they wouldn't normally be able to do. So I just want to really encourage any other landlords out there to be willing to work with uplift. They're amazing people. They do great work. And I just want to put one other plug, since it is mentoring month. I am a local Big Brother and it is totally an amazing opportunity. And it'll not only change life for a child, it'll definitely change yours. So if you're considering it, please volunteer. I mean, housing's good. I like helping people, but that is, it's life-changing. So I just want to put that plug in. I just find it humorous at the same time. But again, thanks, Jeff. Thank you, guys, for all the work you're doing in the community. And if you're out there, please, please get involved. We have such a need out there for what what needs to be done and people to have a place to go, whether it's volunteering for as a Big Brother or even, you know, if it's finding places for people to stay, you know, get involved. We need it.
Well, thank you so much. I'm so happy to meet a fellow big and to see the great work that you're doing. Do we have any other questions or comments for Mr. Davis or Mr. Riley? Councilmember Moulton?
I just want to say thank you for all the great work that you're doing. When I started learning about uplift Eureka and the breadth of programs, I was really impressed. I think one of the best things that small government, like local governments can be doing is coordinating the efforts of existing programs. And we've got a lot of really great people doing great work in this community from business owners to nonprofit folks and just bringing those together in a way that really connects people with them so that the folks can access lots of different opportunities in one place or through one set of communication just lowers barriers and really raises everybody up. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. I think you know how much we all love this program. It is a go-to for us when we want to feel great about what's happening in the city, that's for sure. So we will.
One last thing, I do apologize. I know I went a little long on that one, but I I totally forgot to mention all of our amazing community partners, the the counties, Department of Health and Human Services, the Betty Quan Chin Day Center, the Rescue Mission, Waterfront Recovery Services, St. Vincent de Paul. There's way, way more than that, that, yeah, there's, there's so many to name, but it's, it really does bring this community together and and and, yeah, I just can't thank them enough. And we couldn't have have done everything that we we have accomplished without the help of our community partners.
Thank you very much. And so now we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment and Assistant City Manager Powell. Do we have? We have some today, don't we?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one member of the public who would like to speak. And that is Kelly Wehousen.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Perfect. I saw on the agenda that Henderson Street is going to be getting a lot of improvements, which is really great. And at the end of doing like the sewer lines and everything, there'll be a repaving as well. So I'm hoping that when it gets repaved, there can be safer crosswalks put in for pedestrians and see possibly like at Harrison K, the ones that have flashing lights in the ground. If that would be something that could be done. There's multiple locations on Henderson Street that have been the site of pedestrians being hit by cars. And so I think, you know, with that being a huge problem in our city, that it would be a great benefit to improve those areas when we do this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have any other public comment tonight?
No, Mayor, we did not.
All right. Well, thank you. We will move on then to Ida, to Section B, which is the consent calendar. Did anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar tonight? And if not, can I have a motion, please, to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arroyo. Do I have a second?
We'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano? Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right. So now we will move on to Section C, ordinances and resolutions, where we will continue our discussion from our five o'clock meeting, the Local Emergency Resolution Syringe Exchange Program Amendment. And I do believe we have our next folks lined up.
Yes, Sandra Warshaw?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. The things that I'm going to say don't seem to apply directly to what I heard during the initial discussion, but I believe they do. What happened is it was back in nineteen, twenty nineteen, I asked the Humboldt, the the community, the California Housing Community Development was doing a survey, California-wide, to try to find out what are the unmet housing needs? What can they do to allot money so it actually addresses those needs? So I volunteered to take their questions and go out into the street and talk to people because they seemed to have a great interest in what was happening with people living outside. And so there was this one interview and it came to me that I should share it. It would seem appropriate now, and I hope it's felt that way. Because what I talked to this man was very severely handicapped and I don't want to, you know, give up, privacy issues are important. So I don't want to say too much. But he told me in his own words what had happened is why he thought he was out in the street and why I think it does apply to Hatcher. He said, I've been, I, I was kicked out of my biological parents' house, mother's house, at eleven and three-four. So I've been on my own. And I've been living like this ever since, just like now, like I'm living on the street. And then he went on to say what he thought he was missing and what he needed to find some way to remedy it. He says, I needed someone there to answer questions, somewhere to give directions, somewhere to give them guidelines to go by and to help them understand what it is that's life about and the different stages, baby, adolescent, teenager to an adult. What else is supposed to be taught and understood? You know, not everybody has that. And not everybody has those opportunities in life. And then he went on to say, and he seemed so bright, I believe him. He said, and I could have been present at one day if I could have had the right direction. Now, how does this apply to Hatcher? I was impressed. I don't, can't speak to all the complaints of the of the neighbors. So I take seriously. I think it sounds really, you know, challenging. I understand that. But I was, I was struck by this trust that this man who had lost trust, it seemed like just about everybody. He spoke to what Hatcher did for him and it seemed to, it was consistent with the mission that I read on their website, which they do not use shame or guilt. And so this is what he said, you know, I didn't ask him to say it. He said, they put time into us. They don't judge us. They care about people and they care. They get to know people exactly as we are. They take time to be part of our lives and to try to help and actually help them. And then he talked about how he was staying there. And in the course of the conversation, it came up. I want to say this very delicately because it seems like bodily functions are so important in all these discussions that he had some issues with that and he wasn't able to use bathrooms. And you can imagine what happens when you can't use a bathroom. And so he needed some extra supplies. So I found out, I called all around because I thought, because he said he had to panhandle to get money for it. And I know critics are going to say, well, probably he had funds he should have used, but he didn't. And so for whatever reason, so I called all around. I spent hours and days. I'm not praising myself. But finally, Brian Olson, and don't you love him, he's the one over at, I have it written down, but I'll lose time with like, you know, can you, Eureka Community Resource Center? And he told me about a particular source that could have helped the guy. And this is what so impressed me. I called back all the agencies that didn't know about this and they said, oh, thank you for telling us. But when I called back Hatcher. My time is up. Okay. Thank you. It was lovely.
Very much.
I'm stopping now. Okay.
Okay. Feel free to reach out to us when we're not in a council meeting and you can talk to anyone of us.
Thank you very much.
And who is next?
Chris Galarone.
I thank you guys again for allowing me to speak on this topic. First and foremost, I'd like to point out, the council and city already ruled against the continuation of the syringe exchange program for Hatcher for at least the next six months during the December tenth meeting. And the possibility of a smaller amount of numbers representing opposition, yeah, representing opposition to Hatcher in tonight's open forum is only due to the understanding the situation was already resolved last month. I also want to direct your direct you to the argument where Hatcher claims the citizens have a problem with the syringe exchange programs. Though this most may be true for some people, it is misleading. There are other local syringe exchange programs running in the background and the community is not upset nor has nearly as much or any problem with them. The reason Hatcher is again in the spotlight and on the proverbial chopping block is their complete disregard for the community and the rules slash protocols set in place for their specific program. They have operated on their own volition and not been held accountable for the deterioration of our local community and the environment. As Lasara just said before the break, the ceasing of Hatcher's syringe exchange program for the next several months does not stop them from still helping their base. It only stops them from handing out literally, as they keep no data, countless needles to the public. Does not stop them from offering and assisting in any other of their programs. I would also like to point out, the only argument Hatcher has in defense of themselves are choppy rhetoric and banter. They only tried to appeal to emotion and they never have any of their own data to back up their claims. Only anecdotal evidence from ex-volunteers, not the general public, and quoted data from other national programs that are regulated and ran far better than the haphazard styles of Hatcher. Hatcher has been a dog off its leash that bit us. They propose we give them more freedom regardless and keep asking for more whilst never giving in return. It's never good enough for their standards. I believe no one would argue this is good practice in any other life situation. They need to be reined in and held accountable for their dealings and blame disregard for the community they claim to help. No other professional outfit is above regulation and law. We do not allow restaurants to operate without being checked in on by health officials. Why should Hatcher's syringe exchange programs be any different? They need to be stopped until they can pass SEQA regulations and community requests at the very minimum and prove to us that they are worth keeping in our backyards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Alvarez.
Hi, my name is Daniel Alvarez. I moved to Humboldt about four years ago. And in recently, in a short amount of time, I've learned about Hatcher. And in general, I've learned about harm reduction. Before I get into that, I'd like to kind of bring up something that I feel is like a little misleading about this. We're, I'm sorry, I forgot who said this, but they've said that this is not specifically about Hatcher. This is not specifically about the people at Hatcher. But I'd like to know who it is about then, if it's about a general program for SEPS. Because the only people who are providing SEPS in the community are Hatcher and the county. And I don't believe that the city has jurisdiction over the county. I might be wrong about that. But anyway, I I'm not an expert. I'm not an expert in harm reduction. I'm not an expert in disease spreading. I'm not an expert in needle exchange, syringe exchange, but I do listen to experts. The gentleman before me claimed that the data is all anecdotal. But I've seen almost all these public hearings and we've had countless people come onto these public forums and talk about facts and studies proving that harm reduction works, proving that things like a one-for-one don't reduce litter and just increase the spread of very harmful. Proving that things like a one for one don't reduce litter and just increase the spread of very harmful diseases. I, like I said, I'm not an expert and me bringing these things up will probably just fall on deaf ears. But I'd like to bring up that the community around Hatcher, the, the surrounding community. I feel for their concerns about their community. But this problem didn't go away in this time that Hatcher hasn't been active. I've driven through the community, I personally have seen this less people and it does feel a little quieter. But things usually feel quieter when you bury your head in the sand. This issue has become in these recent months really important to me. Because when we ignore those experts and scientists, I think twenty twenty proved that that can be extremely harmful. And what I'm worried is that the city Eureka, instead of extending its hand out to. The most vulnerable people in our community are instead pulling it back and clutching their pearls. I would like to remind city council that these people that are affected the most by. Crippling, uh, Hatcher's involvement. Are, can't even speak, a lot of them can't even speak at this meeting, you know, just because of the way the world is today. And drug use doesn't get rid of your rights. If your drug use doesn't remove your dignity.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. That's time.
Our next speaker is A. Collins.
Hi there, um, thanks for letting me to speak, uh, or allowing me to speak. So I want to acknowledge, um, that since syringe services have been, um, since they were banned in Eureka on the sixteenth of December. People have had to share, um, needles which, um, like, uh, obviously spreads a lot more disease. HIV and, and Hep C, which isn't only contained in, um, those communities of people who use drugs. Like those, like that, it makes it so that those diseases can like extend out of those. Out of those like smaller communities, like it, it affects us all and, um. It, it, it affects us all and it's also like really important to like consider those small communities too. I would like, I would really like to invite, um. Uh, everyone to come back to the, the issue of care and like the experiences that these people are having in their bodies. You know, like, like being in a body is so sensitive and it's so, um, it can be so scary. And it just. That just feels like the main focus to me is like, if, if there's a way to support anyone, um. Like, why wouldn't we do it, especially these, these people who are, who are super vulnerable and who are community members? Yeah, I guess that's, that's the main thing on my heart right now is, is continuing the support for these people. So that they can have the support to, um, like maintain as much health as possible. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Cornelius Lowenstein.
Good afternoon, dear council, dear citizenry, I hope you can hear me.
We can.
Sorry, we can, I was muted, I didn't realize you couldn't hear me. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, what I wanted to say is, um, the community has already been severely devastated. Uh, we all know many businesses, families, friends of ours that have left the area. And although I am very, uh, proposal, four, five times truly make sense. Away from the waterways, not having a freaking water location, meeting the people where they're at, there's one major issue with it. That is that, um, every time a homeless camp is being cleaned up, we find huge amounts of needles. Those needles are the unsolved environmental problem. And Hatcher must be off the table as a future S E T provider. But should rather be held accountable for the environmental cleanup and the medical liabilities that arise from the issue. Of the unsolved needle litter. After Hatcher is shut down and after they start cleaning up, after we have a, 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 a fund for my future medical liability. Healing of the community will take years, our reputation is down the, you know, where. And, uh, we have to rebuild this community from the ground up. We are facing this opioid crisis, we are in the very midst of it. The true compassion is to harm none and that includes the surrounding community, that includes the family, uh, families. Children, that includes the direct neighborhood. Because harm reduction as practiced by Hatcher has killed us all, has killed the golden goose of Eureka. Look at the lost businesses, look at the, uh, bad reputation. You need, Eureka needs to stop the downward spiral that it is right, that it is in, in the future stuff now. The environmental and economic impact of Hatcher is devastating. We have to get a handle on that, we can't deny it or the other. The Hatcher needs to be off the table as a, as a S E T program. We need trailblazing programs to get a handle on the needle litter that threatens our waterways, that threatens our tourism. Not less, but least of our children, our most vulnerable in the, in the community are after all our children, not, not that.
Our next speaker is Nazee Wade.
Our next speaker is you.
Nazee Wade.
I'm, I'm here.
Thanks, Nazee.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Cornelius. Okay, now Nazee's turn.
Okay, thanks. It's really hard to sit here and listen to the commentary for me. Because I've been, um, working in, um, collaboration with Hatcher. Because we share a lot of the same population over much time now. And, um, yes, it, it is a lot of challenges, a lot of things that have to be managed and dealt with. But I really feel, um, in this, that, that Hatcher's being targeted, obviously. And, and I think, um, unrealistically, I think it's important that we have the, um, syringe exchange program. And that Hatcher continues to be able to operate a syringe exchange program. And it would be great to have it be, uh, operating under the best practices. I think the issue with the resolution is that it isn't based on best practices. At least not in terms of harm reduction and what is currently understood. By folks in that community who, who spend their time, uh, trying to educate all the rest of us about, about that. Also, um, asking that Hatcher add staff to be able to do things is a pretty unrealistic challenge also. Uh, and Hatcher already has staff that are trained in de-escalation and that do have a devoted staff person to. Picking up needle litter and, and, um, addressing, you know, the needs of, of keeping people. In the right direction, doing the right things with their litter. I, I would urge the council, by the way, welcome to all the new council members, I haven't had a chance, I'm sorry, I just jumped in here without saying that first. But I'd like to urge you to vote no on this resolution. I think it's really important that, um, this. That, that doesn't mean that there isn't the need for something, but it needs to be done based on best practices and in conjunction with, um, conversations. With, with the experts in the field, the public health experts and also, you know, the, um, excuse me. The other, um, offices that would be involved, it, it could be very, very helpful in terms of. Local offices even, in terms of AIDS and other harm reduction specialists. So I would just urge you to vote no on the resolution and try to come up with something that's better. I am, I appreciate you. I listened to the first council meeting and I was mildly impressed with the level of conversation. And I would really appreciate seeing that continue over this issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Silla.
Hi, thank you, good evening. Uh, my name is Mary Silla, I'm a senior staff attorney with the Drug Policy Alliance. And I'm back again to challenge the procedures of this proceeding. I was surprised and pleased that this meeting began, at least the early part of it, with your city attorney saying that paragraph D. Of this section pertaining to the location of syringe exchanges could not be included in this resolution. I'm fairly certain this was in response to my email to him earlier today. But this does not resolve the larger problem you have in considering this resolution. An ordinance is something that needs to be posted for thirty days and ordinance has an enforcement provision. Syringe exchange programs were established in Eureka using an ordinance. A resolution does not have an enforcement mechanism, mechanism. And a resolution can be passed at a meeting without any, uh, thirty day notice. I mean, you passed a resolution weeks ago, changing the rules for Hatcher, and now you're here to do it again. I think that that's bad governance and I actually think that it's illegal. The syringe exchange program ordinance that you passed in twenty eighteen lays out specific regulations of the operation of syringe exchange programs. It includes a whole section that says regulation of syringe exchange programs. And it had a location element, which is what the city attorney had taken out of this resolution. It can't be within a thousand feet of a City Parker school. But now you're amending that, you're saying it has to be mobile, it has to require permission from property owners. It can't be within a hundred feet or of any waterway or environmentally sensitive habitat area. I'm not quibbling with, um, the substance of that, but you're amending your ordinance with a resolution and your city attorney actually agreed with me. Yes, you cannot amend an ordinance with a resolution. So you've pulled out this one paragraph, but I don't think that addresses the bigger problem. Case law clearly establishes that a resolution is just a mere declaration with respect to future purpose or proceedings. While an ordinance is a local law which is adopted with all the legal formality of a statute. And further, a resolution adopted without the formality required of an ordinance cannot be deemed an ordinance. So you cannot change the location requirements or any other conditions of operation of syringe exchange programs in Eureka tonight by resolution. Because an ordinance is required to amend an ordinance. So tonight, there have been discussions of this resolution as serving for a basis for informing of future ordinance. And I believe it makes it clear that you're passing a resolution to amend an ordinance. So I urge you to vote against this, it's not good governance and I don't think it's legal.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Lieberman.
Hello, I'm Amy Lieberman and I am a harm reduction attorney working in California. And I am also here to talk about procedure. Um, I agree with everything that the previous caller said. This, an amendment to a resolution that would in effect amend, uh, current ordinance is a completely improper end around. And, um, it seems like you're in the process of amending the ordinance as it is. This, um, resolution doesn't seem to have any legal basis or weight. Additionally, earlier it was discussed that removing the current section D would be replaced by a section D. That was, uh, that you would have to have a plan that was pitched to the city council. But as discussed earlier, it was completely unclear and gives, uh, imposes a vague obligation on. Any syringe exchange that is going to, um, try to operate in Eureka. That's impossible to comply with under the proposed text. It's also unenforceable because, now, all of this is unenforceable because the ordinance consequence of public nuisance. Wouldn't apply to this resolution, it's not, a resolution is not an ordinance. I'd also like to mention that it seems pretty contradictory to amend a resolution. That is ostensibly about alleviating the effects of COVID nineteen pandemic. To place more restrictions on a service that the resolution itself admits is deemed an essential public health service. At this critical moment, communities should be putting less restrictions on life-saving organizations like Hatcher, not more to protect human lives. Especially when the population served by Hatcher, it may also be especially vulnerable to COVID nineteen. Um, and the kinds of services that they provide could help prevent the spread of that illness as well. Thank you for your time, I hope you vote no on this resolution.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jay Reader.
Um, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Jay Reader. Um, I lived in Eureka for nearly two years. Uh, I like that Hatcher is part of my community because they take in more needles than they give out. Prevent the spread of HIV and other diseases and keep people in my community healthy. I think it's unfair that they're being targeted for the things that previous staff members did. The people who gave Hatcher a bad name to begin with are no longer associated with the organization. So I think that it's time to allow them to do their life-saving work.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Right, our next, um, hang on, I'm letting someone in. And our next, uh, speaker is John Shelter.
Well, good evening, city council, mayor and city staff. You know, I've never heard a community this divided except for when you talk about the virus or you talk about homelessness or you talk about syringes. You know, my challenge is not about the men, the medical part of this. You had open door clinic come up with numbers and stuff, it's the environmental impact that syringe litter is creating. You know, there's compromises that we can make, that if Hatcher wants to do a job, then we should do maybe a, a third party. To be accountable for the syringes going into the agency and the syringes being taken up when they do their cleanups. How about cleanups two to three times a week at their locations that they do drop off? So wherever they do their drop offs, you have two people because that's safe practice, never one person at a time, anywhere. And then last but not least, since they have so much backing with open door, um, public health, the aid. DHSS, why not switch to syringes that have an indicator? A color syringe, if we're gonna buy them a van and get grant money for that, let's do something and put the two. Most important things that we need is identifiers, people. We need to know where these syringes are coming from. Until then, it's just a mystery, everybody can throw out numbers. But with those three compromises, we can get a handle on this atrocity. Whether it's one for one, which I believe in, um, I come from a time when a syringe was a felony. You know, so it's a little bit of time difference now, I've gone to school for substance abuse intervention. So I know what's talking, I have twenty-five years of working with the same population. What we need to do is start thinking and these attorneys that came up that, you know, started blowing out these air, that's wonderful. I wish they were there to provide homeless with a safe place to be safe, warm a- and dry. But that's besides the point, syringe litter is out there. New Directions, which is the business kind of equivalent to uplift Eureka, which is a very good program. Is that over fourteen thousand, my crew this week without me picked up another hundred and some, so we're fourteen thousand thirty-two syringes. These mostly come from locations that I know are close to these areas. So I look at you guys and say, whether you approve this or not, let's put some teeth in it, if they want to do it. Well, you know what, give them the rope. But make sure that we can identify where the syringes are coming from. I thank you guys very much for tonight.
Our next speaker is Erin Ostrom.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Mayor Seaman, am I allowed to play a muted video related to the subject matter while I read a statement? You're muted, I'm sorry.
Three minutes, three, stay in your three minutes and I'll.
Okay. I'm not against mobile syringe exchange, I'm against syringe litter. I'm an environmentalist against syringe litter, I'm against the corroding of our beautiful outdoor spaces with biohazardous drug waste. I do feel that harm reduction has a need in our community, as long as we can do it in a way that reduces harm to everyone. What I mean by everyone, I mean reduces harm to users, to non-users, our environment, our fish and wildlife. I think this can be done, but each side of syringe exchange is going to have to give a little, how to respect for all parties involved. I feel Hatcher has shown time and time again, they are not willing to respect all parties involved. And I hope DHHS and another or another organization is willing to work with the city to come up with a plan that reduces harm to all parties. So if the city decides to move forward with mobile syringe services, it absolutely cannot be with Hatcher. And it can't be done in a way that harms non-needle users, our environment and our fish and wildlife. If mobile syringe, syringe services are offered in Eureka, it has to be better managed. I've seen firsthand, literally hundreds of times, that what happens when we give out fifty to a hundred plus. I've seen firsthand, literally hundreds of times, what happens when we give out fifty to a hundred plus needles out at one time to a person. They end up being tossed in and around homeless camps and around town. Most abandoned homeless camps we see, we rarely find a syringe container filled with needles. We rarely find syringe containers. All we do is we find hundreds of new and used needles all over camps and around town. If you offer mobile syringe exchange, it has to be done in a way that reduces harm to everyone. Listen to your voters. I think it's a common factor we're all looking for. If a needs-based approach is going to work, then we effectively need to address needle litter, which hasn't been done effectively yet. The camp you see in this video is an example of hundreds of camps in and around the city of Eureka. No syringe containers, just syringes. How can you tell me what's happening right now is addressing syringe litter effectively? While people behind desks and cubicles say they're addressing needle litter through needs-based program, the folks on the front line cleaning up all the syringe litter say otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Our next, our next speaker is Ben Breckenridge.
Thanks for having me on. I appreciate it. I'm just speaking as a resident of the fourth ward up here. I find needles behind my house all the time. It's absolutely ridiculous. I don't know what the solution is. But it's clear that what we're doing right now doesn't work. And I really appreciate people like Nezzi and John and Aaron who come into the community and do the good things that they do. They've done some great cleanups in my neighborhood. But it still is scary enough when I gave up walking my dogs on the bike path at night. We've just had too many run-ins with needles. So I don't know what the solution is, but I hope we're able to figure it out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Reynolds.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Andrew Reynolds, and I am the Hepatitis C Wellness Manager at the San Francisco AIDS Foundation, co-chair of the California Hepatitis Alliance, and proud member of the Hatcher Board of Directors. I urge you to vote no on this amendment. Hastily designed public health amendments without medical expertise makes for bad public policy. Hatcher has played an essential role in preventing HIV and hepatitis C outbreaks in Eureka and Humboldt County overall. Certain service programs perform this essential role, but we at Hatcher also do so much more. Hatcher provides HIV and hepatitis C testing, linkage to medical care and social services, and this includes drug treatment. And we have a very robust Medicaid assisted treatment program. We continue to provide these services, but we're hamstrung by our inability to provide sterile syringes. To further restrict anyone's ability to perform syringe service, certain services places people who use drugs at risk of infectious disease and overdose death. And I just want to remind everybody that people who use drugs are a part of our community. There are children, our siblings, our friends. Expanding harm reduction is what's needed right now to help them, not to limit it. Each time I've spoken at a council meeting, I've said that Hatcher is a willing and open partner with the community and with our city officials. We've demonstrated a willingness to compromise and build bridges. We've done one-for-one syringe exchange. We've offered to put up a fence and made other concessions in recent months. We're still willing to do this. Please vote no today and invite us to the table to develop a sound public health policy that benefits everyone. We can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Louise Armana.
My name is Brandy. That's the name I signed up with, Brandy Laura.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I work at Raven Project with at-risk and houseless teenagers. I believe in research-based methods of harm reduction in healthcare, which means I support SEPs and specifically Hatcher, and I volunteer for Hatcher. Recently, I've watched members of the community bash Hatcher and advocate for them to limit or completely stop their services. What many people don't realize is that the Hatcher they're trying to punish and hold accountable is gone, and a new team makes up the Hatcher that exists now. Hatcher is a nonprofit organization that receives limited funding that must be used in certain ways. This is how all nonprofits work. Hatcher doesn't have the funding for additional staff members. Hatcher already came to an agreement with the city, an agreement that wasn't even in the best interest of participants, but was better than the alternative. The city backed out of the agreement, stopped needle exchange, and are now making more just random demands. As a person who has reversed overdoses on loved ones so they wouldn't die in front of me, I could not have done this without SEPs. Our community needs Hatcher to survive. I have been in the building and witnessed people accurately documenting intakes of needles, using credits, picking up needles. And anyone who is saying that Hatcher doesn't abide by one by one is very confused and they're not witnessing it and they're not in the building. It's really awkward and comical to me when people say that Hatcher volunteers and staff don't pick up needle litter because they literally do. It's not something that can be disagreed with because it's not an opinion. It's a fact. So you're just not witnessing the work people are putting in, and you ultimately don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anita Ramirez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm an intern at Hatcher, and I ask that you vote no on this amendment. From my understanding, this amendment was made for your local harm reduction center, but it wasn't made with your local harm reduction center. So I think that's a little weird. Also, I don't know why you guys want to make us add another person to our outreach services because the van's already pretty squished and there's no room for anything. And it's pretty dangerous for an at-risk person of color like myself who is twice as likely to catch it. So that just makes it even more difficult for me to do outreach services without fearing getting COVID. I also hear a lot of people talk about litter. And all of, not most of these people talking about litter are housed. And most of our clients are unhoused. So if you're housed, you got trash, you can put it in a trash can, like it's in your kitchen. But people don't have kitchens. They don't got trash cans. So it's a little harder for them to pick up their litter. And we give them bins, but it's not always easy for them to take it everywhere. But we're always welcome for people to bring in their bins. And yeah, I'm sorry about all the litter, but it's not really our fault. We should like put more services towards bins around the county or around the city. And maybe more services towards like adverse childhood experiences or trauma or stuff that like leads people to do drugs. Thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you.
Speaker is Dr. Anne Lindsay.
Thank you. Welcome to the new city council members. And I've served as Humboldt County Public Health Officer for eighteen years. And I have the most respect for the staff at Hatcher. They're dedicated. They work for low pay under challenging circumstances. And I think they should be saluted as community heroes and not thwarted in their work. Treatment for addiction is as successful as treatment for hypertension or diabetes. People need a chance. The people who use needle exchange, they're all someone's loved one, a parent, a child, a spouse, or a friend. So I urge you to, and recommend that the city manager and representatives of the newly constituted city council convene meetings with Hatcher, California Department of Public Health, and to work out evidence-based solutions to the issues of concern. This amendment would critically limit effective delivery of services. And it's not a good idea. Not all injection drug users are homeless, but I've observed that syringe litter has become more of an issue for public since the homeless encampment behind Costco was broken up and homeless people, some of whom injected drugs, moved throughout the city. And homelessness remains a significant issue to be addressed. And so we need to, and furthermore, needs-based exchange is supported by scientific researchers, preferable to one-on-one. Mobile units are not as effective as permanent locations with regular hours. And this amendment puts conditions on Hatcher that are not workable considering their budget. For example, that their vehicles for mobile exchange only, you can only put fit two people on it, so they can't add extra staff to that. So I thank you for the time, and I really urge you to work on a better solution than this amendment represents.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Candy.
Hi, to try to respect your time, I'm going to read from a prepared statement because I'm passionate about this topic and I could talk for hours. My name is Dr. Candy Stockton. I was born in Eureka and I returned to this community to practice medicine because it's my home. I'm board certified in both family medicine and in addiction medicine. And to be clear, I'm not affiliated with Hatcher in any way. My interest is in the health and well-being of my community. And in this case, the goals that we share, the appropriate treatment of people who use injection drugs and decreasing litter in our community, they have the same evidence-based interventions. The proposed amendment to the emergency resolution regarding SEPs is in opposition to what the science and evidence tell us about treating individuals who use drugs. And if the primary goal is to decrease syringe litter, it's without regard to the studies on this as well. This amendment was created without significant input from the Department of Public Health or local experts on treating individuals who use drugs and those who provide harm reduction services. That decision is no more appropriate than if you decided to tell me how I can treat individuals with diabetes, congestive heart failure, or COPD. The science of appropriate harm reduction is well-established, and we know that individuals who engage with harm reduction services are more likely to engage in personal recovery and decreased risky behaviors over time and are more likely to dispose of the syringes appropriately. During the time of COVID, where isolation, loss of support services, and financial uncertainty have increased the risk of relapse in individuals with substance use disorders, putting more barriers in the way of necessary treatment pathways will increase death and overall disability for these members of our community, and it's unconscionable. Additionally, substance use disorders are a recognized medical disease, meaning the individuals who have this diagnosis are protected under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Intentional or unintentional arbitrary decisions that place these individuals at increased risk of death and other complications may place us at risk of charges of discrimination and liability associated with this. I urge you to vote no on this amendment and to seek input from experts on any decisions that you do make regarding these life-saving services in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Savannah O'Neil.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name's Savannah, and I'm the Associate Director of Capacity Building at the National Harm Reduction Coalition. In this role, I oversee technical assistance and training for syringe service programs in the state of California. I've been in this role for the past two years and spend most of my time working directly with syringe service programs in the state to establish programs that are informed by community rooted in best practices and to take into consideration local community concerns and the environment. Prior to this role, I also worked as a social worker and addiction treatment counselor for over a decade directly with people who use drugs. The proposed amendment to this resolution regarding syringe service programs is not based in harm reduction best practices, isn't realistic for any program to adhere to, and isn't going to address community concerns or care for those in need of services. Of the sixty syringe service programs in California, very few operate on this strict one-for-one model because this restrictive model is not effective for disease prevention and poses a health risk for people and community members. As Alessandra Ross from California Department of Public Health shared, these restrictions are not aligned with recommendations from CDC. And research shows that these type of restrictions don't reduce syringe litter, but do increase the risk of people reusing and sharing syringes. Lastly, restrictions on syringe access don't explicitly outlaw other services that Hatcher or Humboldt County Public Health could engage in. But given that one of the core services which facilitates relationship building with clients is syringe access, we know this will impact people coming and their exposure to warm relationships, trusting conversation, and linkage to treatment when they're ready. Those are the relationships that foster all the other services that programs are able to do. I urge this new council to vote no on this amendment and instead request that a new amendment be crafted with input from experts. In this critical time for public health, it's essential that local and state experts are brought together to craft a regionally appropriate amendment informed by statewide best practices and public health information. Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Our next speaker is Carol Griffin.
Carol, are you there?
Alrighty, our next speaker is Jessica Smith.
Carrie is there, and she's trying to speak. Oh, okay. There, she's just, it looks like she's muted or her volume's not up.
We can't hear you, Carrie. Maybe you want to try to connect to audio in a different way?
We'll come back to you. Maybe you'll want to get out and come back in. And we'll put you on the list. Is that okay, Pam?
Yeah.
So we can go to the next one.
We can move on to Jessica Smith.
Hi, everybody. I had prepared a written statement, but probably going to veer a little off course after some of the comments that I've heard this evening. I do just want to mention this, and I hope that folks sort of keep it in mind as we wrap up comments and just have more conversation. But syringe litter doesn't cause HIV or Hep C outbreaks. Preventing people who inject drugs from accessing syringe exchange does create those outbreaks. So I just, I just want to keep that in people's minds. I guess I want to start by responding to some folks who just kind of blatantly said stuff that's not real, especially about data. So I have some Hatcher data in front of me. From January to July of 2020, Hatcher's cleanup crew collected six thousand twenty-seven discarded syringes. Let me find the regular 2020 data. In 2020, six hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-seven syringes went in, five hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five went out. A hundred and thirty-eight people reported saving lives. It's probably much more using Narcan, but that's what folks came back and reported to Hatcher. There are close to sixty-five people in active treatment with Bright Heart Health. This is a data point, a number that has been validated multiple times during public comment and city council meetings by our partners, Bright Heart Health. And again, Hatcher has a designated cleanup person who works four to five days a week paid and does more on their time off. Hatcher as a unit has collectively done cleanups in the community. They stopped doing it sort of as like a larger group when people started being harassed, specifically volunteers and participants who were doing cleanups, they were being harassed by community members. I'm not sure about y'all, but if someone's making it their like life goal to shut down my program and spread misinformation, I'm probably not going to want to partner with you and do cleanups with your organization. Hatcher is happy to do cleanups and provide that service, but not with folks who don't want to actually spend time getting to know what actually happens with the program and what sort of is happening. We absolutely have a homelessness crisis. We were, and we've declared a shelter crisis. So seeing a bunch of trash and garbage and things out in the environment really does suck, but that's not Hatcher's fault. So yeah, just like everyone else here, I'm just, I'm here to say, please don't pass this resolution as all of the doctors and lawyers have already mentioned, like it doesn't align with best practices. It didn't check in with any public health or harm reduction specialists. Please consider working further with Hatcher and other specialists to make a better amendment to this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you.
Right. Would we like to try Carol Griffin, please? She's, okay, we have, she's just getting back on. We go to Raymond Cortomachi.
Yes, good evening, folks. Raymond Cortomachi, I am a team leader for improved health at Bright Heart Health. And I did also wrote a prepared statement in the interest of time. I too am somewhat personally challenged about some of the personal comments tonight. Understanding the disease of addiction, my wife, Trish, and I were the parents of a son who was elected to the Fairfield City Council at age twenty-one, who subsequently was murdered at the hands of someone high on drugs that pointed a gun in his direction. The reality is that opioid addiction is categorized as a mental disease. And embracing those that help this extremely stigmatized population is to be commended. Mayor Susan Seaman and city council and staff, I want to commend you and your continued commitment to this objective. And if I could read this, I shared a letter with Pam to provide your city manager and your mayor that we request that you also vote no on this amendment and that a new amendment be crafted with the input from the California Department of Public Health, Office of Age, and other harm reduction specialists. Indicated, Bright Heart Health is committed to serve Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction. And it is worth noting to date that we have entered sixty-five persons into a high level of care and have. into a high level of care and have retained those individuals at 30, 60, 90 day intervals at 92% beyond. And again, this is, Bright Heart Health is a premium telehealth medicine provider that's contracted in over 40 counties in California that is providing 24 hour services, seven days a week. And again, we're here to be committed to help you serve your community's homelessness and those that are severely persistently mental health populations. It's a, it's a state to statewide issues. Hawaii has 9,000 people, you know, sleeping on their beaches, et cetera. So homelessness is a big issue and to really categorize the issues that we're dealing with relative to syringe exchange and those that are trying to enter increased high level of health awareness and behaviors should not be stigmatized. Again, I challenge and encourage you to take an offensive in this and lead the change for your city in the benefit of those that are struggling. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hey, our last registered speaker is Carol Griffin.
All right, is that better?
Yes, that is very.
Fantastic, okay. I'm Dr. Carrie Griffin. I'm a family medicine physician and a newly board certified addiction medicine specialist. And I work at multiple locations throughout the county. I also had more of a prepared statement. It was a little bit of divine intervention that Jessica went after me or after my, my failed attempt at miming words because she spoke so beautifully to several things. One, I wanted to say that there is local data and people keep persisting and saying that there isn't, but Hatcher has provided that continuously. And she also named what, in addition to reinforcing what Dr. Lindsay and Dr. Stockton and multiple public health experts have said here, which is that syringe exchange programs continue to decrease the transmission of communicable diseases. Hatcher in particular has been premier in their ability to reinforce community based referrals to Bright Heart Health, whom we just heard from, as well as connecting people to local MAT resources and county mental health services, as well as residential treatment. They also, and this is so critical, especially after hearing at these two most recent meetings, the stigma that people are experiencing on a daily basis in our community. The fact that they create a culture and a community gathering space where people can come and receive care that is both evidence based and persistently available is huge. Having said those things, I mostly just want to make an observation about the content of this conversation. And, and one is that we seem to be having a false dilemma pervade this entire conversation. There's this idea that this is about the environment or evidence based substance use services. And I just don't believe that that's accurate. It seems like there's been a failure of relationship, and this is why I'm so grateful that Jessica, who is a part of this community for much longer than my mere two and a half years and can speak to the intricacies of this, can name. What I wanted to say, again, newer provider, newer person to this community, but it's hard to want to be in relationship with someone when act is scrutinized and judged. And when the underlying assumption is that the population being served is inherently bad. I feel like what is inhibiting this conversation from continuing to operate in the realm of logic. And again, since this is a public issue, we have deviated from the realm of evidence, science, medicine. But I'm caught up in this idea that addiction is a moral failing. And I just, as a human and as a physician, I would really ask the council and my fellow community members to vote no on this resolution. I'd also like to underscore what several attorneys mentioned, which is procedurally, not an attorney, this doesn't seem right, nor does it seem like an emergency. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate everyone's ability to show up here and welcome to the new council members.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, that's our last of the registered speakers. I did notice that some people had joined the meeting and so I don't, and I do see there's a hand up on Emily Smiley.
I would like to give a couple people an opportunity to speak. And then after those maybe two or three speakers, we'll take a break. It'll be a little after eight. I hope that's okay with you all. It'll be a good time to break. So Emily, is that what you said?
Yes.
Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Barely, you're very quiet.
Let me get closer. Is this better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name's Emily Mossman Smiley. I'm a resident of Arcata and I very much appreciate what Hatcher has done. When we talk about addiction, we should be, I'm also not affiliated with Hatcher in any way. I'm just a community member. When we talk about addiction, we should be looking at the causes and attacking those issues. What was done on December 10th, I'm pretty sure it was December 10th, took vital services away from our most vulnerable population. We should, sorry, we should be attacking the causes of addiction and not taking vital services away. Addiction is not a Humboldt problem. In the days of, sorry. Baby, I'll be right there. It's okay. In the days of late stage capitalism, people with addiction and homelessness are a result of loss of humanity within the system. I request that you vote no on this resolution because it does not reflect best practices of the CDC and in general seems unreasonable. Please work with Hatcher to resolve this because the community needs them and we all need to learn how to work together. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Okay, did we have anybody else with their hands raised?
Max, Max's iPhone.
Did you want to speak, Max? Max, this is going once. Okay, do we have anybody else who wants to speak?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. And Max still hasn't sort of chimed in, so maybe he wants.
Hello?
Oh, he is there. They're very.
This is Max. This is James Graham. I've been waiting in line for two hours.
Oh. Okay, James, you go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I hear a bunch of people talking about how there's a new staff there. Things aren't the same. That's totally untrue. The Syringe Exchange Coordinator has been texting me telling me Hatcher does not sell drugs there. In response, I sent her the undercover investigation videos where they were caught selling drugs and then handing out meth pipes. Okay, so giving them guys permission to do a mobile exchange is a terrible idea. Spreading needles all over our county. The Hatcher clients have proved they cannot be responsible enough to pick up their own syringe and not leave it in harm's way of a child. People of Humboldt County are getting really tired of it. Like I said, they've had many chances to do the right thing. They've been asked to color code their needles. They say it's too expensive, but then they want you guys to buy them a car and a fence and all that. They can't be trusted over and over again. And to prove that, simply go to Firefox's page right after you guys told her no more distributing needles in Eureka and look at her, what she's trying to do under the table, right there for anybody to see. And I know you've seen it, Mary, because I sent it to you personally. It's time for no more needles and dope and time for counseling and hope. If Hatcher wants to do something good for the community, start counseling them and quit handing out needles and enable them, enabling them. Eureka is a zombie wasteland. It's, and also somebody mentioned, you know, it's been a short time since the cease and desist. Well, I've been by the library in that area many, many times. And I've got it on video and there's nobody there anymore. There's no more, call them what you will, junkies. There's no more people camped out with tin bags and at the library with nugs of discarded syringes random and a brand new. I can verify that. Kim was there when that was happening, when she went on a walk with me and my children. And so was the CSAT officer. He's seen it as well. The library, the condition of the surrounding area has improved greatly since you guys did the cease and desist order. It's like night and day, even down by the Samoa Bridge. I'd like to see the council or somebody get together and try to figure out how to help these people and not continue to enable them. And like I said, there ain't nothing different about the new members than the old ones. They're all the same. For the Syringe Exchange Coordinator to call me and tell me drugs aren't sold there is ridiculous when they've just been caught doing it. So let's see if I got anything else real quick here. Pretty much, that's about it. I mean, they can't be trusted to, to go around giving out needles all over the county. That's ridiculous. There are so many needles in our county right now. It'll take 20 years before they ever degrade if, if they even.
Thank you. You're all done now.
That one by a whip. Welcome new council members.
Do we have any, any others? Is Max there? If not, we'll go ahead. We will take a five minute break only this time, if that is okay, because we've still got a lot to get through tonight. And I will see you back here at 8:08. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
My internet's just the worst tonight. I think I'm going to leave, I'm going to try to leave my camera off just for a little bit to see if it improves it.
Okay. Well, now that I think we're all back, I don't see Kim on the camera either. Kim, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so we're all back and let's get back to it. Our public comment portion is over, so I'll bring it back to the council for comments, discussion, emotion of some kind. Oh. Shoot, and then council member Arroyo, I've got to get you to the front page though, so that I could see if you have a question and I can't find you.
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
I'm gonna talk.
No, that's good. When you talked, then I found your card. I'll put you up here. Would you like to go first? Okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
I need to think a little bit.
That is perfectly fine. Does anybody have any questions or, I mean, in comments? Council member Castellano.
First, I have a question. It would be directed towards the more lawyerly component of our merry bands tonight. And that is firstly, I suppose this is the question for City Attorney Black. Could you reread the alternate selection D that you suggested at the beginning of this portion of the meeting?
So that, that is buried in my email. I'm hoping that mine, just for purpose of reading it, has it up top.
Yeah, I have it. Would you like me to recite that, Councilmember Castellano? It is, "A provider interested in administering a clean needle and syringe exchange program or SEP in the city must provide a detailed operations plan for review and approval by the city council at a publicly noticed council meeting."
Okay. And so I think my question would be related to that. And again, I mean, I'm happy to vote no on this and make everyone happy, but I just kind of want to pull out this concept here. So what if the, there was only that section as the extra things, but in addition to that, or following the statement that City Manager Slattery just read, it would say, like addressing public health practices and response, environmental concerns and safety plans slash protocol. Would that kind of appease the potential legal problems that were mentioned earlier during the public comment? So basically, sorry, just to stay with getting at a little bit more. And that is the idea that, I mean, to me, the, the plan that would, that anyone would propose, you know, could, could address some of these things that we mentioned later on or, or not. You know, it could work with public health or, you know, to, to create a better plan. And it's, it would be coming back before council anyway, right? I mean, according to that section D. So, so I guess I'm just curious, like if we need all the other stuff. You know, I mean, and part of me, right, sort of my comment or some aspect is that I'm fine voting no, but that still leaves a public health concern of people who aren't able to potentially access clean syringes until, I don't know, April, May, when have you? So, so that's kind of where I'm at with it. And so I'm hoping someone can address that question for me.
Can you hear that, City Attorney Black? I can do my best and.
I just asked my wife to turn the TV down, I think, as Leslie was just making the, the final, the final portion of her question. Maybe you could re, repeat that, Leslie, just the last part.
I may be slightly more eloquent this time, who knows? So, so basically, I'm suggesting and asking about striking everything except for your replacement item D. Adding to that replacement item D, the idea that this plan would address public health practices, environmental concerns, and safety protocol. You know, with that item, it would be coming back before council anyway. You know, so I assume there would be the capacity to comment, you know, give preference or, you know, on whatever plan is, like in terms of best practices. You know, my, my, from that idea that, like otherwise we're looking at waiting until April, whenever, you know, to, to have syringe exchange services.
So I think the resolution that's in front of you is an attempt to address not having any syringe services until April. And it's, I can, I can envision that language could be crafted to do what you want to do, but among other things, this is part of the emergency orders that flow from the COVID pandemic. And so, number one, you'd have to weave that into the, the requirement of an operations plan. It would have to address COVID mitigation and safety procedures. And you could, you could specify that and make it part of your suggested amendment. My belief is that, that what you're suggesting is a legal way to go. And again, as you point out, it, it does bring it back in front of you. You'd probably want to set a fairly tight deadline for that to occur. If you are really supportive of the idea of SEPs, which I think the council has expressed itself, at least historically, that the council is supportive of SEPs. And so, you know, I think what you're doing is feasible. Does it address the legal issues? I can't really answer that. I think it's up to the other lawyers to do that, and I'm not suggesting they do it tonight. But, you know, the law being a human enterprise, what's legally feasible kind of depends on your prediction of what's, what is a judge going to say about it? So, and that's, you know, that's a difficult predictive part of, of lawyering. But I think, yes, I think that could be justified to a court. I think what you have in front of you could be justified to a court primarily based on the fact that I, I find the idea that we're trying to amend an ordinance where the resolution is pretty, is just specious. There's nothing about, the, the ordinance is not being amended. It's simply not being amended. It's like that's an anti fact. Now, there are other things you could say about this, but I'm not going to suggest them, but the, you know, I think the idea is that you're taking an urgency action that is a bridge action between now and the ultimate adoption of a new ordinance that has had sequor review. And you're doing it under COVID emergency authority. You're doing it under the, the principle that your existing ordinance requires Hatcher or any SEPs provider to abide by the city's policies. And that ordinance would be violated if this. And that ordinance would be violated if this resolution passes. It establishes city policy and uh Hatcher chooses not to to live with those policies. Uh, and, you know, X, I'm not talking about going to court, but extra legally doesn't live with those policies, that makes their actions a nuisance. Um, and so we've, you know, I think we've kind of been over that. And, you know, others, other lawyers may have different opinions, but that's mine.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Yeah, I I after listening to the public comment and hearing, um, you know, I hear that there are concerns about this, um, basically from from most parties. Um, but I I'm not sure if maybe people are looking at the language out of context. Um, I realize that syringe exchange programs don't want these um provisions applied to their operations um all the time or at all if possible, but um you know, this is in the context of our COVID nineteen emergency declaration. And so perhaps the language isn't clear enough that this is like only a stopgap measure um that that's being considered. And um and it is like like staff and like councilmember Castellano just said, intended to kind of meet this interim need and admittedly, uh, somewhat less ideal to everybody kind of way. Um, and like a you know, everyone gives up something for this interim thing, which would otherwise not be allowed at all. So we have a resolution saying not at all. And then we have this other resolution saying, well, but during our emergency um situation, you know, we recognize that we have a heightened public health problem. And to try to address it in some way, shape, or form, we would, we would do this. So I'm well aware that I was, I'm a little confused and frustrated that I didn't feel that a lot of the discussion tonight has taken that into account. Um, it feels like people are like, don't persecute Hatcher anymore or don't allow Hatcher anymore. Um, and what I didn't hear a lot of was, does any syringe exchange program want to do a one for one mobile exchange right now until we have some better ordinance? I I don't know. Um, I honestly don't know. It sounds like staff are saying perhaps we do have that. Um, and as a person in charge of you know, running the city, one fifth in charge of running the city, I feel that we have to explore all the options, even if we're sick to death of rehashing this. So I I guess I'm a little I'm a little disappointed that I don't think I got enough information about this in the context of a COVID nineteen emergency declaration. Rather than we're, perhaps it was unclear, we're not like talking about applying these these provisions all the time forever. Um, so with that in mind, I guess I'd like to hear from Lasara, if you have thoughts, or Miles, if you have heard from other potential applicants about whether this would be in any way useful as a stopgap before we have another ordinance.
So I, you know, I I definitely thought of it in that context. I've been somewhat surprised about the reaction to um the one for one exchange. Um, we've been, you know, informed multiple times in public meetings and in person by Hatcher that they've been one for one um since two thousand and eighteen, I believe. Um, so the 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 reaction to that was surprising to me. What was also surprising was um, you know, we are aware that they pay somebody to clean up needle litter as a part of their operation currently. And we're also aware that during the settlement proposal that they agreed upon having another staff member to monitor behaviors at their site. And so those are the two complaints that I'm hearing most often. And so I've been um surprised at that because we have been told that they've been one for one, and we just thought that was going to be continuing existing condition that they've already been complying with. And um the addition of the, you know, behavioral person was something that was agreed upon as a part of the settlement proposal. Um, as far as it relates to COVID, that, you know, that's the reason why we're able to do this through it, and that's why the whereas is we're put in um at the beginning of the um resolution.
And Executive Director Alan.
Yeah, so um we have been doing one for one exchanges. The uh provision of removing the credit system is part of our uh concern in that we have a functioning credit system at Hatcher, as you all know um at this point, and that credit system makes it possible for people who are unhoused, for example, to bring in as many syringes as they can find, uh, you know, from cleaning up the neighborhood themselves, which many of our participants do all voluntary cleanup uh procedures in the area. Um, will bring in more syringes than they want to carry on their person. And if if the incentive is not there for a credit system that removes the incentive for our participants to be cleaning up syringe litter, um, it also creates a situation where people who are unhoused and don't want to be carrying more supplies than they can easily uh handle in their on their person. Um, it creates a situation where they will be walking away with more syringes than they need to carry that day. So the uh more restriction from moving from a one to one with a credit system to a one to one without a credit system removes incentives for our population and also creates the potential for more literate, not less. Um, in addition, it creates a situation where our population is not going to be getting the uh number of syringes that they need when they need them. So if you're unhoused and you are an injection drug user and you go and to the exchange and you bring in syringes and then you need to carry all of those away at the same time, that's not a functional um situation for most of our population. Our our credit system has been highly effective. Um, as far as the question of whether we're willing to give up these uh, you know, basic elements uh, you know, to to move more restrictive rather than less restrictive, which is the recommendation from CDPH and CDC at this point, is neat, you know, on demand, needs-based distribution. Um, are we willing to do that? The problem is it's a precedent-setting situation. Um, as I understand it, the wording that was created for this amendment is lifted from the uh the upcoming uh wording for the uh, not the resolution, the ordinance, the upcoming ordinance. And so us creating a precedence for that decrease in services and uh increase in restriction of services is not good precedent setting. Um, and it's not in alignment with best practices, as has been cited repeatedly by and by numerous people. And and the risk factors right now for our community are higher than they've been in decades. Um, this is across the board being tracked. There are increases of HIV and hepatitis C transmission. In addition to that, there are increases in syphilis uh transmission within uh the county of Humboldt um over the last two years. That's not going down. And syphilis is also a bloodborne pathogen that is transmitted in certain cases during use of shared shared equipment. Um, these are all a and, you know, as was mentioned by a number of people as well, the increase of of, and I believe Dr. Lindsay mentioned this specifically, the increase of potential injury from using reusing syringes that are not sterile and that are not, you know, fresh increase the weight on emergency services, emergency medical services in our region. So why would we want to be creating a situation? I'm asking us as a group, why would we want to be creating a situation where we are increasing the weight on the emergency medical system in our county right now? Why would we do that?
Councilmember Royo, did that address your issue?
Yes, thank you. Um, I I hadn't thought about the idea of it being precedent-setting. I was thinking of it as sort of a a short-term um alternative that might be um outside of what what we would all sort of typically, how we would typically approach this. Um, and I can see, I can see why you wouldn't want to do that, and then no one's here to force any program to do something that is not within their mission. And um I just honestly wanted to know if this was even something that was had any value as a stopgap measure. Um, and it sounds like I'm hearing a pretty robust no on that, which is which is good. This is why we have these conversations publicly. Um, the only other comment I wanted to make uh at this time, and I'll probably have more, to be honest, is um about the this idea that the city um council would review an operations plan, review and approve um and establish rules and regulations. Um, I just would really love to see any future um decisions that we make around what an operations plan or rules for a program would consist of be um in line with the CDPH rules and plans that are already required to be submitted, just because I don't, I'm not a subject matter expert on this topic, and I don't think any of us as council members really are. Um, and so my my hope would be that we can, because a lot of the onus has been now placed on us as a city to determine how to regulate something the state already regulates. Um, and has good outlines for. So I'd just love to see us look for that to align with the state requirements rather than reinvent um expectations or practices. So as we move forward with looking at other options and an ordinance in the future, that's just what I wanted to add.
City Manager Slattery, I saw you wanted to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something, you know, it said components of the amendment for the for the resolution were derived from the draft, the petition, the 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 particular section about the credit accrual and the one for one was not one of those things. Um, there are other things, even as we sit here and I hear this, um, that draft is being changed as we talk and go through this already. So, um, but that one component was not something that was taken from it.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I just, I have a lot of things to say, but I think, um, you know, first of all, let's say we vote no. And I'm just trying to figure out what's the next steps. We go through CEQA. The earliest we could have another SEP would ordinance would be April. Is that is that right? And then maybe another question is, I mean, so I guess the county is performing these services and they've extended their the amount of services they're providing. Um, but you know, it seems like the lawless discussion has been, well, it's illegal. Um, shouldn't do it. It's precedent-setting, but it seems like it's in the best interest of those we're trying to serve is to get something going again. So I'm I'm kind of confused a little bit. Um, I appreciate what um all of those who have spoken, who work with um those struggling with addiction is a disease. And we need to, we need to, thank you for helping those people. I I do appreciate it. But I struggle with this. Um, this isn't good enough, or or this is wrong, therefore, you know, throw out, throw out the uh not perfect. Um, you know, even though it it has potential to help bridge the gap, you know, so I'm just trying to understand. I mean, heck, you know, vote no, and and we'll have this kind of emergency, you know, this crisis going on for the next three months. Or, you know, let's 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 do it and um and then we'll, it'll be a first step to achieving a longer term solution. So that's all I have right now, but maybe the, you know, City Manager Slattery can address how long we really think it'll take. And is there anybody waiting in the wings to potentially sue us when we do, you know, get something put together, and then that even extends us further down the road? So a lot of questions and thanks.
I I think that's a good question. I think that that's part of the conflict that we're having here is that, you know, we do want to follow those professionals and those guidelines and those type of things. But, you know, the reason why we're in this situation is, I would say, a portion of the reason why we're in this situation is because of the CEQA issue. Um, we not only have to still provide the service, but we also have to be able to be in compliance with CEQA. And so when staff reviews this, it's not just from a public health perspective. It's from a perspective where we want to expedite this, and if we don't put the provisions in there that mitigate any sort of issues that may happen as a result of having these operations in the city, then this could lead to a much longer process. Um, it could lead to two things, I mean, three things. You 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 go through the process. The analysis results in a mitigated NAGDAC. We declare that, we wait thirty days, and then we can come back with that ordinance. It could also result in we 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 make our findings and we declare that it's a mitigated NAGDAC. Um, certain people challenge that, most likely not from the public health arena, but they challenge it, and then it's stuck in court for a very long period of time. Third thing that could happen is that we don't put enough provisions in there, and it ends up that the analysis results in environmental impact report. Then we're without an ordinance, I would say, for a minimum of at least, I don't know, I'm no expert, but I would say approximately a year. And it would take to go through that process, and it would cost a lot of money. Um, so that's a tough balancing act. And um, you know, I understand the public health. We have talked to CDPA. We didn't talk to CDPH in order to draft these things um because the timeline was pretty short, but we have talked to CDPH. We've talked to many SEP providers throughout the state um through this three or four month long process that we've been through. So we are aware of the information that they're providing.
Councilmember Castellano.
Um, here's another question. I, you know, I like like other council members, I'm I'm just kind of wrestling with the yes, no factor. Um, I'm curious, you know, from a, again, stopgap measure, if we kept most of the provisions included at the end of the resolution, except modified provision E by striking the words whose sole purpose is from in both, in both uh places where it's written. Just because, like, I I feel like that the cost of that, you know, I I already imagine that a a mobile, you know, there's going to be a lot of extra things that go into operating a mobile um SEP and that the people who are also doing the exchange, I imagine could also be doing the other things. Um, and so it's a question of you know, a and perhaps adding in providing, you know, litter removal services at the locations surrounding air area, like during and after the hours of operation, you know, you know, like, there would be a half hour period after in which people would kind of do any additional cleanup or or something like that. I I'm guessing that would already be part of it, but I don't know if we need to put that in. Anyway, that's just a question. Um, if that would kind of make it seem more feasible for folks. Maybe that's a question for Director Allen first.
Hey, who do you want to direct that to? So Director Allen?
Yeah, I would like. Yeah, I would like to say that I'm, I am, that would make a huge difference for us, just as far as our basic operations go, it would make it possible for us to have a starting point to work from. We don't have a vehicle that accommodates for riders and supplies at this point. We have a vehicle that accommodates two riders and supplies. And so, and as I have stated, all of our employees are trained in de-escalation and in safer cleanup protocols. So if the sole purpose language were stricken from that item, that would make a huge difference for us operationally, and I believe for any nonprofit SEP, for any nonprofit SEP. We have to, we have to plan out, we can't just add employees. It's not a thing that we can just do. We can't just decide, oh, we're going to add an employee now. We have to actually find the funding first and then add the employee. So if we had to add employees in order to undertake the mobile protocols, then we would not be able to start offering services under the agreement as it stands. Additionally, I, yeah, I believe that that would make a huge difference. I mean, the other thing is the, of course, the wording of the final line. And so I don't know what, what, where that could go. But, you know, to, to address Councilmember Bauer's comments, I just want to say that I would love to see us all come out of tonight with a working stopgap measure that serves the population. I would love to see that more than anything. It's impossible for us to support something that actually hamstrings us, though, and that makes it impossible for us to do our mission. So, so that's the impasse. You know, if, if it can be amended to the point that our existing relationships with our population can be preserved, which are being eroded as we speak. You know, the, the fact is that our population has a tenuous relationship with, with services anyway, and our services being taken away from our population has been traumatizing for a number of people, incredibly traumatizing. And we've been dealing with that backlash on the ground since the day that this went into effect. We've had some very disheartened, very bereft individuals to, to, to accommodate. And we, you know, most of them, we haven't seen back since, since we were unable to give them the services that they needed. So, so, yeah, our, our population is suffering. We would love nothing more than to be able to serve them, starting as soon as humanly possible. And so if there's a way to create that outcome tonight, we would be overjoyed.
City Manager Slattery.
You know, as I stated at the beginning, you know, when I was referencing staff that, you know, could be changed to staff or volunteers, I know that Hatcher has a lot of volunteers and needle liver removal is, is a pretty basic task that can be easily trained. So we could even change it to say staff or volunteer or intern or whatever that may be, because I, staff is very aware that they're not flush with money. There was never an intent to say that that needed to be a paid staffers.
I have a clarification question on that, though, because isn't it also not just the paying somebody, but actually fitting them into the van that they're concerned about? So having that extra body?
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm commenting if it went to what Liz, Councilmember Castellano was referring to, if there's two people in there, and both of those don't need to be paid staff members. It could be a staff member and a volunteer, or an intern and a volunteer, or whatever it may be.
Councilmember Moulton.
A question for Director Allen, is it currently your practice to send one person out on outreach or multiple people?
It is currently our practice to send two people at all times out on outreach. We never serve one person, send one person alone. That would be endangering our, our staff. I, I, I wouldn't go out alone, I would never send anyone out alone. So two people is our, is our policy. And so if anyone is leaving on an outreach from the building under Hatcher's jurisdiction, then they, it's a two-person operation.
So if this were, if the item E were reworded to say that, in addition to the person doing syringe exchange, there was another person whose sole duties were to do these other things, monitoring behavior and monitoring litter, then that could be covered under the two staff people that ordinarily in practice would be on outreach already?
I mean, it's workable. It's not ideal for us, because often if you have multiple people, if you're doing an exchange and you are interacting, engaging with multiple participants at one time, which does happen from time to time, then two people operating the SEP services is better than one. So one person keeping track of the data, one person handing out the equipment or, or supplies. And so having the flexibility to staff it, I, for our purposes, it would be ideal to have the flexibility of those two people being able to fill those roles in whatever fluid a way worked. So Councilmember Castellano's wording really seems the most simple and to the point for me, and we will accommodate whatever wording is made, as long as it's within our reach of providing two people on the vehicle with our supplies, you know, because, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to stonewall, I'm just feasibly, you know, that's what we can offer. So yes, we can do either, whichever way that the wording goes, we will adhere to that.
So then my only concern with Councilmember Castellano's edit would be that it, regardless of Hatcher's regular practices, that it would leave open the possibility of a, a mobile SEP operating with one person whose job would be then to do the, do the, the actual syringe exchange and these other things all at the same time, which seems, no?
I hear, I hear, I, I absolutely hear you, and I, I think that it would be absolutely, you know, it, it, it's highly effective to have two people in, in the, yeah, in the wording.
Okay, okay, so, so that's my concern, is that in this, in the way that it's worded, it sounds to me like that would, that would leave open the possibility for one person, and I see other people have responses to that.
All right, it's not, it still says and an additional staff member. So it still indicates two staff members.
Okay, so then I had one other comment, thank you for that, Councilmember Castellano. I had one other comment, question, concern. And that is that when I see the, the one for one exchange with no credit accrual, I hear that as punitive to the perceived misdeeds of Hatcher, that is not addressing the, has nothing to do with the, the need or best practices for mobile SEPs or what should happen, but rather punishing the possibility that we, you know, somebody thinks that Hatcher's credit accrual is not honest or not, not straightforward. So if we are having this be about SEPs in general, about mobile SEPs in general, and not specific to the behavior of Hatcher or the history of Hatcher, then I think going for, striking the words with no credit accrual from item F would make me more comfortable with it. And then moving forward, listening to the science on, or digging deeper into the science on whether or not one-to-one needle exchange actually does mitigate needle litter, I think would be important, because it seems like emotionally or intuitively, it seems like a one-to-one exchange would mean that you're taking in at least as many as you're giving out. But if the science doesn't support that, then in the ordinance, we can, for the ordinance, we can have that different discussion. So for this, I would recommend, I would be more comfortable if we could eliminate the phrase with no credit accrual from item F.
Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I, I'm personally, I'm against that. I mean, we've heard a lot about, and frankly, this is the first I've heard about needs base. I don't remember this in the last discussion prior to Katie and I being on the city council, but it seemed like there's been a shift a little bit, like one-to-one was okay, and now it's not. I understand where in an emergency situation, COVID situation's a little different. But what I also heard from a, a large portion of the community that we serve is, you know, thousands of needles, you know, littering parks, and I had people calling me about this. And I kind of hear this message of responsibility, you know, we're giving you something that can be dangerous, the responsibility is to return it, you know, to, and I, I understand that, and maybe that's not what the health experts, you know, agree to, agree with. But I think it's an important thing for us to think about, maybe, you know, trying to achieve a balance with, with our community, with those in need of the service and those that see it as, as a problem. You know, I think that's important for us to all think about, you know, credit-based, you know, I, I struggle with that. And I'll just tell you a quick story, because, you know, me and some friends, my wife, my family, friends, family got together, we're all hanging out in the park. And mother hearing is a beautiful thing, because my wife heard, I'm going to give you a shot. And my four-year-old son was preparing what they use needle to give his friend a shot in the arm. And it still troubles me to this day, you know? And thank God they caught him, because he was right there. So it's a real concern of mine, is something, and it, and it bothers me, and I, I think there's some responsibility. One of the steps of recovery is, is taking responsibility, and we want to help people to do that. And I don't think, I think a one-to-one is, is the first step to personal responsibility. And I know these people face trauma, and that's why they're in this situation, you know, due to personal trauma. I totally understand that. I'm not trying to disregard that, but I'm saying for the community, it seems like a one-to-one is the most appropriate thing, and credit base should be left in, into item F, just my personal opinion. Thanks.
Councilmember Royo.
I had a couple of ideas that came to mind since we're going through this, what right now seems to be a thought exercise of how to make this better and how to find some compromises during a time when, you know, frankly, I think spring is optimistic for a new ordinance. So I'm, I'm a little, especially after our last few meetings, I'm a little, I'm, I'm hard pressed to walk away from something that seems like it could be a compromise. And I, so I have a couple of thoughts. As I was listening to this discussion, I wondered if there could be a cap on the credit that someone could accrue. So an alternative somewhere in the middle, so that people would have an incentive to pick up more syringes and could get more if they were going to visit less often, perhaps due to the pandemic or other reasons. But there could, you know, potentially exploring whether a limit makes sense. And then my other thought was around actually placing more syringe disposal receptacles at key locations for an emergency period of time. And I know that they're really expensive to maintain, and we have to pay for the service of it. And the existing new red bends that the county put in, well, they're not new, but they were a few years ago, were a benefit, I believe. But anyway, I'm, I'm interested in hearing about that, and it looks like Director, excuse me, City Manager Slattery.
So we were part of those discussions a long time ago. The county made that decision without the input of HWMA. HWMA is the certified needle disposal location and the state agency that regulates that. It's their opinion that if we were to do that, that we need to go through a permit process and get it certified, similar to how HWMA is. That's why when we did the program with the Sharps containers, that was in lieu of those boxes. One thing that we could do, and we've done before, and it was not successful, but we inserted, you know, pretty heavy-duty metal boxes with Sharps containers in them in our public restrooms, in the hopes of having those public restrooms not be vandalized and clogging all the time. They weren't used all the time, but I think that's something that, similar to an airport, we could do. Or we could revisit that conversation with HWMA and see if that's, opinions changed.
Yeah, I, I'm really interested to continue to explore needle disposal options for the longer term and more receptacles. I just, I hear this needle litter issue, and while, while I am not encountering many in my personal adventures around Eureka, I, I don't doubt that other people are, and I've heard a lot of stories like Councilmember Bowers that, you know, are, are real concerns. I want to acknowledge that, and I think disposal options need to be explored more. I don't think that's something we're going to be able to include necessarily in this ordinance, because it sounds like there's some homework to do, but I'd just love to see that really maintain, be maintained at the forefront.
Councilmember Castellano.
I appreciate the perspective on a limitation to credit accrual. I actually drafted some notes during this conversation, kind of speculating on that about, it's like 20, you know, 25, I don't, you know, I don't know what a number might be. I'm not attached. To me, the E measure is more important at this moment, but I'm definitely interested in kind of contemplating a, a, you know, for this stopgap measure. And again, I, I do want to reiterate the importance of working with CDPH and, you know, public health professionals as we draft the ordinance going forward for the spring.
So I just kind of like to check in, oh, okay, I'll ask Councilmember Bergel, but just think about how we want to wrap this up, because we still have a capping ordinance to get to, and I don't want to do this, I don't want to rush anybody, but I would like to not have to have many, many more special meetings. So Councilmember Bergel.
So I've been listening very vigilantly to all the information that I've heard here today, and I've heard many different perspectives. I heard one Dr. Carrie Griffith say, we're not in an emergency. There's no, you know, we're not in an emergency. And then I've heard other people say, you know, this is definitely emergency. So in looking at this, first of all, I want to thank staff for bringing it back so quickly. I think that we did make a good decision last, last month in moving forward with CEQA and, and stopping practices until that time. However, in looking at the population, I think it's also important, you know, I don't know why people aren't going to the county as much, and it, it is a, it's troubling to me that people are not going to get other types of supplies and to make those connections. It's too bad that that is, that the syringes are the way to get that. It seems like if people needed food or socks or those kinds of things, they would go anyway. And then, did you mention, Director, or City Manager Slattery, did you mention there was another SEP that was interested?
It was a preliminary conversation with the community member who gave me the name of the company and said that they may be interested.
And then I've also heard tonight that there's all these random, random demands. And so what I would say is, I'm going to look at this from a people perspective, the people, you know, first of all, I've heard that this is our most vulnerable population, and one of the ladies that said that, I heard her baby crying in the that this is our most vulnerable population. Uh, and one of the ladies that said that, I heard her baby crying in the background. And I, it was kind of a strange feeling because really, um, our children and listening to um Councilmember Bowers um experience really reiterated that, that, that that's our most vulnerable population. The folks are vulnerable, I agree, but, but looking at our children and our elders are, um, those are our most vulnerable populations. So, um. But that, all of that being said, um, in looking at E, um, I would be willing to support if we were to move forward with this, which I think that it is um a good idea if we have other SEPs that are interested. We need to have some kind of emergency policy or something in place. Um. That we do strike the words. I crossed them out already.
It's so
purpose, yes. And then secondly, um, this person who does the cleanup or the, the needle litter removal, you know, I, I wonder if there wouldn't be volunteers at the cleanup that are at the exchange that wouldn't be willing to do that, but just having that documented. So maybe when someone's coming to pick up their syringes, maybe three or four people, or maybe one person um is willing, because it seems to me that Hatcher is kind of a family situation, that maybe one of those people would be willing to um each time be willing to do that cleanup. And that might take care of the driving, the, the vehicle and that type of thing. Um, secondly, in the, in the section F, um, with the credit, I'd been thinking too, I was thinking, well, gosh, what, what if we capped it? What would that cap look like? And if people are getting two hundred, is a hundred a really a good cap? And, and how are we going to work that out? And so what I would like to see is that F remains stable through this emergency period until we have an opportunity to revisit this in the ordinance and make those changes. So I would be willing to support this with the two corrections that were made, the one about the um the language that I crossed out, whose sole purpose. And then um the idea that it doesn't have to be a staff member, but maybe there's a way to document who's doing the cleanup. Um, and maybe there's a, a sign-up sheet or something like that, like a service commitment type thing um to get them through the next several months. Um, and then leaving F intact until we have an opportunity to um to move forward with the ordinance. So. Um, so, so, so I'm going to make a motion. If I can find it. Uh, to adopt a resolution of the City Council extending this local emergency and adding provisions to follow for mobile syringe exchange programs during the local emergency with the amendments that I have listed.
Yeah, City Manager Slattery.
Just remember that there was a change made to what was presented on
Oh, and, and the, the, um, the changes that uh City Attorney Black had made, excuse me.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on this item? All right, we can
I, I do, sorry.
Oh. So I can't see. All right. So Councilmember Royal and then Councilmember Castellano.
Um. I'm wondering if a friendly amendment of a credit cap would be considered. Um. And I don't know what that would be, but I think it could help with people actually picking up litter per our conversation. Um, Kim, are you
Let's hear what
Interested in exploring that.
Okay, LaSara had a comment.
I mean, I'm categorically opposed to a cap, but if, I mean, to a, to a, to a cessation of credit and a cap, but if a cap is to be made, um, I think a realistic cap is not under five hundred. Um, when people are bringing uh supplies in from outside of the area, for example, they can easily bring in that many. Um, when you're, when you are engaging with a population that is regularly um using syringes, the use in a day is anywhere from one to, you know, six, seven easily. Um, syringes in a day. Uh, on average, I believe some of our population is around four. Um, that's a guess. And so if a person comes in once a week, we're talking about them doing an exchange of, of volume. Right? So for folks who are coming in from outside the area, if they, if we're, if we're incentivizing them bringing their syringes back and not, again, not having to take them all out at once, then um I think five hundred would be a middle ground uh point. I would go higher, but I don't think that it would gain traction.
Um, I'm, as, as the, as the attempted suggester of the friendly amendment, I, I'm, I'm looking at you and thinking that might not um be in keeping with the motion you were trying to make. Um, I guess I, I want to clarify now because my understanding is if someone brings in fifty syringes and they get fifty syringes, that is like a true one-for-one or what, you know, what, what people call that. Um. And if they bring in two hundred, but they only take twenty, then they would be able to get those a hundred and eighty at another time. That's my understanding of this credit concept and why that is seen as a one-for-one model is, and, okay, so I'm, I'm tracking here. Um. It it makes sense to me. Um. And I can understand why it would be an incentive. And I can also understand why it just seems like so many to people in the community. Um. But I, I wonder, um. Councilmember Bergel or Councilmember Bauer, if you have thoughts on what seems, um, what if anything seems tenable to you? I, I just wanted to like make sure I understood what we were talking about when we're talking about a cap and how that fits with the one-for-one. So is, it, it looks like that's my understanding was correct as far as the current process is, right?
Who are you just asking? Councilmember Royal?
Um, I guess Director Allen.
I'm wondering if we can direct any questions to Alessandra Ross at this moment on, on protocols in this arena. I think that Alessandra Ross would be a better source than I would be.
My question was really around um whether that's how it currently works. That's how the one-for-one and cap, or, or, excuse me, uh, the one-for-one and the credit system work.
Yes, the credit system is basically that people bring in a certain amount. If they don't want to take out that amount at the same time, then that amount that they brought in is put on credit.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Castellano and then Councilmember Bauer.
Actually, Councilmember, oh, sorry. There you.
Um. Let's see. Uh, well, I think Councilmember Royal had asked a question first about the concept of the friendly amendment to Councilmembers Bergel and Bauer. So maybe I would be curious to hear about that first and then go from there.
Okay, Councilmembers Bergel and Bauer.
Well, let me, so sounded like to me that an average is about four or five uh needles a day. Well, sorry, you can just nod. Is that, is that true?
That's my guesstimate from our current population.
Yeah, about an average. Okay, so you're thinking a hundred-day supply. And, and I'm just, I'm asking these questions like, are we talking about people coming from Trinity County or hours and hours away? Is that what we're talking about the need for five hundred?
We do not require ID, so we don't know where people are coming from.
Okay, but I would assume if you want to give them five hundred, they're, they're living in the hills somewhere.
One would
Right? I mean,
One would assume.
Yeah, I mean, but if we were to treat this like a prescription, you know, I think a typical supply is thirty days. Um, i- if you were to get a doctor's prescription for something, so why wouldn't something like a hundred and fifty, a thirty-day supply, a month's supply would seem to me or, or maybe it's, if it's, if the average is four a day, a hundred and twenty, but I think five hundred um to me seems a little bit, especially when we're talking about people bringing three hundred in and only taking twenty. I imagine it's because, you know, hard to pack around hundreds, right? Um, but I think that I would have a hard time with that.
So you're not a, not interested in the friendly amendment, uh, Councilmember Bergel?
Well, hold on one second. I would, I would say I would be interested in possibly, sorry, Kim, but um a lower number. Um, I, I think the amendment, you know, uh, uh, that's reasonable, but five hundred to me seems like how, you know, it seems like the community at large might think that to be a problem. And I, I would agree.
Okay, Councilmember Bergel.
Mine muted? Yes. So, yeah, when um five hundred does seem a lot. Um, when I was listening to you, LaSara, and you were saying four to seven a day, um, I was thinking, you know, if we were going to do a cap, you know, maybe thirty a week. Because if you figure, if you're doing seven a day, that's, that, or no, forty-nine or be fifty, say fifty. So if you're doing seven a day, that would be forty-nine syringes you're using a week. If we rounded it up to fifty and people come in one, once a week, um, that would, that would make sense during the interim period. I'm talking about this emergency period. I'm not talking about an ordinance. I'm not talking about down the line, any kind of long-term policy. I'm talking about getting us through COVID right now. And um, so I, I would be more um interested in, if we were going to do a cap, um, fifty, I would be hesitant, but it sounds to me to be much more reasonable. And that would give the um, the high end because you did say four to seven. That would be a week's supply. Um, and people do generally, you do this weekly, so it would, it would make sense in the interim.
Okay, Councilmember Castellano.
Uh, I, I guess, um. I could go for fifty, I think, but I would like to hear from the doctor and the public health professionals in, in the if you're still in the meeting, if, if uh Doctor Stockton wanted to comment, which it looks like you do.
That's right, so.
I do. Thank you so much. Um, so I, I, obviously, I, I appreciate the difficulty that you guys are in. And I'm so appreciative of the, the fact that you're not just taking the easy way out and voting no and leaving people stranded without services. So, so I do appreciate that. But I do want to actually call out something that was just said that was, that was factually inaccurate. Um, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Councilman Bauer, but but actually, it is typical for doctors to provide a ninety-day prescription for medications and medical supplies because we know that at every fill date, there's a disruption in services or a risk of reduction in services. And that's why if any of you are on blood pressure medications from your doctor or diabetes medications or anything else that we treat with, our preference is actually to supply with a ninety-day supply for medications in general. Having said that, I would like to call out that I think you guys have this a little bit reversed because the cap that you allow is actually what incentivizes how many people collect and bring in. They can always collect twenty and bring them back that we can get more um, and, and do that. There's a, a, you know, increased risk of disruption every time that happens, an increased risk of delay and increased risk of reusing needles, but, but they can always do that. The cap that you're setting is just capping the amount that people are going to be willing to collect and bring in. So having a higher cap from a perspective of actually what you're capping is not how many they could take out. They could take out more anytime they bring some in. What you're capping is how many they're going to carry in at one time. It, we, we want that cap to be higher. And it's consistent with good medical practice to provide ninety days of medical supplies, not, not seven days or thirty days. And we don't, you know, we try not to do that with any medical condition because we know that every time we create a stop or a, a need to refill a medication, that we're risking that the person will have a delay in that process. So, so again, not trying to pick on anybody in particular, but, but actually, if you're going to call out what doctors do, that's what we do.
Thank you very much. All right.
I was referring to opioids, right? We don't typically prescribe opioids for many days. Don't you have to go and call the doctor and get a refill? Am I right? I'm just, I, I wasn't thinking of heart medication.
Well, so actually, uh, opioid treatment medication or a clean syringe is more likely to save your life on any given day than a heart medication will. Um, but having said that, actually, no, for patients who are stable in opioid treatment, we actually, and that includes addiction treatment, we do prescribe up to ninety-day supplies of those medications. And in fact, the guidance that has come out from the Fed specifically relating to the pandemic is that we relax the restrictions around prescribing those medications because there's so much risk of death in this population and harm in this population right now that it's in the public best interest to actually be a little bit more lax in terms of creating artificial restrictions rather than increasing them. So I, I with LaSara am categorically opposed in general to the concept of a cap, although I also agree that anything that gets people access to medical services, that is an actual, real, practicable plan in the interim is better than no plan. But, but my, my suggestion, since you asked me what a doctor thinks, my suggestion would be that if you want to study something and come up with the best recommendations or the best guidelines for studying a change, that you study it first before you set the change, rather than, than actually implementing an arbitrary change that might have the potential to increase um, you know, death, loss of life and, and, and increased harm. Because we said an arbitrary cap, it would be more beneficial to actually work together and look at what those numbers look like over the next two to three months in this period and then set a cap if you feel it's necessary based on that, rather than picking an arbitrary number. Because I'll tell you that my husband is a diabetic and he goes through seven syringes a day to stay alive. Um, and, and so, I mean, the, the amount of needles that are used to treat health conditions can seem astronomically high to people who aren't familiar with living with those things on a daily basis. Um, and so, yeah. And I will be quiet now and let you get back to your conversation.
All right, so Councilmember Castellano wasn't done, then Councilmember Bergel.
Um. I guess a, a question for Councilmember Bergel and Bauer that I, I, I don't really have anything new to say outside of what the medical professionals already said regarding that. Um. Uh, I'm curious just hearing that information, you know, if if we would be willing to accept a friendly amendment of just SCPs must operate a one-for-one needle exchange. Um. You know, basically just the system that was already in place. Um, again, not saying that that's the ideal, but um, that would allow for credit accrual, basically. Um, again, yeah, w- would that friendly amendment be acceptable?
Councilmember Bergel.
So. No. So I would be willing to, again, you know, I don't want to select any arbitrary numbers, no disrespect. I think it's right that you're right in saying that we do need to do more research on figuring out what that cap or what that might be. Um. So I think that it, it may be just important during this emergency period, not, again, not policy for the rest of our lives, those types of things, to continue as, as I had said before with um uh, just eliminating the credit accrual until such a time as we can get an ordinance in place. Or, you know, I would be willing to cap it at fifty. Um, you know, you're right. I guess that means that people won't be doing other cleanup. Um, but they will be getting what they need if they're using, you know, seven a week. And I understand, you know, maybe diabetes is a little bit different of a disease. Um, than addiction. I, I know that it, you can have both. I do know that. Um, so I would either say in this case that I would just leave it with no credit until this uh is further resolved. Or if we want to do any type of cap, it would be fifty or less. I, I cannot Or if we want to do any type of cap, it would be fifty or less. I, I cannot, I cannot abide by five hundred at this time. Um, or even a hundred and fifty. I think that, you know. We need to get some policy in place before we make any long-term. Policy that way.
So I saw Councilmember Moltin. Has something to say, and then we do have a motion on the floor in a second, so. Um.
Uh, this would be about the, the suggestion of the friendly amendment for a cap, and I just have a, an anecdote of my own. From my own work doing street outreach. Um, I never worked in, directly in syringe exchange, but I definitely witnessed it happen and witnessed. Uh. The den mothers, the people who take it upon themselves to protect the other folks in their. Scene, the, the folks that they are socializing with, and when you're talking about this kind of work, building trust is really important. And finding one person who's going to be that in, that's going to help encourage everybody in their social circle to participate in something like. Like a syringe exchange is incredibly important, and oftentimes, that's the person who has been. You know, saying like, look, guys, no clean needles, and they're, they're collecting the needles themselves. They're the ones who are putting themselves at risk by, you know, openly going and, and doing the, the syringe exchange, so. Um, I feel like, in my experience, the people that are doing the needle exchange often come in with more than they're using personally. I don't know if that's actually okay by regulations, but it does seem like it's a practice that's really common for people to kind of take it upon themselves to make sure that the folks that they are. Using drugs with are not sharing needles for their own protection, but also for the protection of the people that they love.
Councilmember Castellano.
I'm going to try something I tried last month. I'm going to make a substitute motion. Um, uh, basically, the resolution, um. With these, with the change that, in, in item D that Attorney Black made. Um, with the strike-throughs of whose sole purpose is in both. Uh, appearances in section E and with. The wording for section F, SCPs must operate on a one-for-one needle exchange with credit accrual.
I'd second that.
All right, do we have any discussion on that one? Um, and then we vote for that one first, and then we'll vote. Okay. So, I don't.
I have a thing. Um. I. I also have a friendly amendment. Um, I know that this might be unpopular. But I would like to propose a cap of one hundred needles. Um, I'm just really trying to be that middle person here, and. Uh, I can feel that I'm going to get all the glares, but I think it's worth throwing out there to see if we can. Um. Yeah, find something that, that we can support with.
To Council.
And I also want to.
Alanos, so.
Yeah, this is my amendment, my new amendment to Councilmember Castellano's motion.
So how would you feel about that amendment to your motion, Councilmember Castellano?
You know, in, in the interest of moving this forward, I would be in agreement with that. Um, though I would like for us to look at this on a deeper level for long-term planning.
All right, how would you feel, uh, Councilmember Moltin about that friendly amendment? Does your second still stand?
It kind of makes the, the replacement resolution or the replacement motion sort of moot, but yeah, I'll, I'll still second that.
Okay, so then we vote first on the, the substitute motion presented by Councilmember Castel. Oh, we have discussion from Councilmember Bergel. You just muted yourself.
Yes, that's because it's already getting late again. Um, yeah, so, um, Councilmember Arroyo, when you're talking about a hundred, tell me how you came to that number. I'm curious.
Um, a one-week supply seemed like too little, and. Um, when I hear community complaints around this, it's often that people get. Hundreds and hundreds or thousands of needles. Um. And. I. Frankly, it seemed like somewhere between a thirty, you know, in the, in the range of about a month's supply, perhaps. Um. I, I'm open to changing that, but I also realize that if people are bringing in more, then they can get more. Um, on that, on that basis as well. Honestly, it was just. Throwing it to the wall to see if it stuck, not entirely with no information, but, um. Just trying to find something that we could come to some agreement on as a short-term measure.
So a hundred would be about two weeks. I mean, really, if you think of it's seven a day, forty-nine, that'd be, you know, a couple of weeks.
Um, well, in light. Four to seven, I was thinking five a day, so.
Okay, okay, okay.
But that's still less than a month, so whatever. Um, yeah, if we want to modify that number, it's just something that I thought that perhaps. Um, those of you who are having some concerns around, um, no cap could potentially get behind.
Okay, Councilmember Moltin.
I'm not done. Sorry. So, um, what I would say to that, um, is that after listening to, um. To what you've said, and then also, thank you for the reminder, um, Councilmember Moltin, that is very true. What you talked about, about how oftentimes there is one person that kind of is the lead, that kind of takes care of everybody. I've known a lot of those. Um, and so. You know, it's just, for me, it's an additional week, uh, to, or to, to cap it at a hundred. I would, I would be willing to move to a hundred, to move this forward. To cap it at a hundred.
Okay, Councilmember Moltin.
So then my question is, what is the cap on? I'm assuming it's not, if it's not on one-to-one exchange, and it's not on how many they can turn in. Could they then, like. Get on the books as credit, but they can only take as many as they brought that day, or is the no credit mean that they could bring in five hundred and they're just not get, or they're? You see what I mean? If they bring in five hundred and they take a hundred out, then that's just. Um. That's my question. What's the cap on? Where does the cap come into effect in the process?
Councilmember Castellano, do you have a, oh?
I mean, my understanding is that the cap is on the credit. Because the one-to-one is the same regardless of how it's phrased.
So in Councilmember Moltin's example of bringing in four hundred and taking out a hundred, they would have a hundred credit.
That was my intent.
If they didn't have a cap, Councilmember Moltin, it would be bring in four hundred, take a hundred, they would have a three hundred dollar credit. But we're capping that, the three hundred needles, not dollar, three hundred needle credit, but they're capping that amount of credit to be at one hundred.
So they could bring in a hundred, or they bring in four hundred and. Take a.
They could still take four hundred.
Yes.
But if they want to take four hundred, they could only have credit up to one hundred.
Honestly, it does encourage people to have more needles and take more, uh, excuse me, to take more needles with them. It would be a cap on the credit. So in some ways, I'm not sure if it serves the correct purpose, um, because it would encourage people to just take as many as they bring in. Um. I, again, like, I, this is not a great solution, it's just a, uh. Uh, could we agree on this type of question?
So if I remember right. Councilmember Moltin, did you say, yes, she's, you're okay with that amended second?
I would, yeah, I would, um, do, I'm okay with the amended second with the hundred cap on the credit.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the substitute motion? All right, please, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moltin?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Do we have to extend the meeting? Um, we will have to extend the meeting, and I'm also going to ask, um, for permission that. Ordinance is going to take a lot of discussion. We're not going to take care of that in a half an hour. I would really like to move that to, maybe we have a special meeting, but see if we can get to the business, um. Grant program, because I think that that will be, uh. Fairly quick and really important to have it start as quickly as possible, so. Um, do I need to take a vote on that? Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Powell, Assistant City Manager, just consensus, is everybody like, if they say, okay, can we just move forward with that change?
Is everybody agreeable, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So after we do that, then we might have to discuss, uh, when we move the next meeting, unless we can change, unless we can move the ordinance till. The next council meeting, so we'll have that discussion after we hear the presentation. From, is it going to be Director Millar who's doing that today?
It should be, uh. Uh, Project Manager, uh, Asbury.
Oh, good, I didn't see her on the call, so thank you very much. Economic Development Manager, Asbury, are you there? Oh, you probably thought you had a break, because there was going to be a really long discussion. Oh, good, she's here.
Let's see, you don't, Swan, we can't hear you. We can see your presentation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. When I share, is it showing my notes screen?
We see your PowerPoint now, and we can see you.
Okay.
And we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am presenting a new program to provide, uh, rent relief grants to small businesses, which we are calling Eureka Small Business Bridge Program. I'm going to go over the program, who is eligible, what documents they need to provide, what are processes, where businesses can find the application. And then I'm also going to talk about the California Relief Grant, and then.
I am so sorry, but I forgot to actually get the motion to extend the meeting, which I think you're supposed to actually do. So I'm terribly sorry to stop you.
That's okay.
But I think it's.
We extend the, I move we extend the meeting until ten.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, do we need to do a vote, please?
Uh. Let's, uh, Castellano.
Aye.
Aye.
Arroyo.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Bergel.
I think you.
We didn't hear you, Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you, I am so sorry. Um, welcome back.
Don't worry. Um, also, at the last meeting, uh, you asked about, uh, the update on cannabis during COVID and our Cares program, so I'm just going to do those really quickly too at the end.
Okay.
Um, so tonight, I am asking you to approve the Eureka Small Business Bridge Program. We've set aside three hundred thousand dollars to provide grants, uh, up to seventy-five hundred dollars for small businesses. To pay unpaid and pending rent from January first through April thirtieth. When talking with businesses, staff is consistently hearing they're worried about getting through the next couple of months. Um, this is the time of year when things typically slow down, and for businesses that have already been struggling. The next couple of months, they're worried about being able to hang in there, so our hope is that this program will help them stay in place until things start to pick back up again in the spring going into summer. So to be eligible for this program, businesses must meet the following eligibility requirements. They must be a for-profit business or a nonprofit entity that has been negatively affected by the pandemic. Applicants must have had a twenty percent or more reduction in gross revenue resulting from COVID-nineteen. The business owner must live in Humboldt County. The physical commercial address must be in Eureka, and they must have a valid City of Eureka business license. The business must have ten or fewer full-time employees, including the business owner. The businesses must have been in business as of March first, twenty twenty, and the business must have a valid certificate of occupancy. Businesses with active code violations and home-based businesses are not eligible, and individuals that own or have interest in more than one business will be limited to one grant. So, um, when they do the initial application, we're going to be asking for a valid government-issued ID that shows their home address and confirms the, um, information on the application. All relevant financial documentation that demonstrates the economic injury to the business during the twenty-twenty calendar year. This includes, but is not limited to, bank statements, tax returns, payroll records, as well as financial statements. Prepared or reviewed by a certified accountant. Their rental, lease, mortgage, or past rent payment documentation showing how much rent has been paid in the past for the commercial space. And documentation showing the number of employees and their hours worked per week. As far as the process, applicants may fill out an application, including required documents that'll be found on the city's website. After the initial application review, if the application is complete and eligible, applicants may be requested to submit additional documents. The grantee's landlord or lender must provide confirmation of the grantee's statements about the payments due, provide a W nine form, and be willing to accept payment on behalf of the grantee. And then we will pay the applicant's rent or mortgage on their behalf up to seventy-five hundred dollars. So for businesses that are listening. If the program is approved tonight, tomorrow morning, it'll be put on the city's homepage under city's news, under city news at the bottom of the page. And then I also want to make sure that businesses are aware of the California Relief Grant that's out right now. It closes January thirteenth. And so, um, we'll have information on our website about that as well, but there's, you know, five thousand, fifteen thousand, and twenty-five thousand dollar grants. Available for businesses and nonprofits and tribes affected by the, um, pandemic. And then just a quick update on the Cares program that came to you in September. Um, since launching our program, we have dispersed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in grants to over twenty businesses. We have four restaurants that are having parklets constructed, and we have begun landscaping on Card Plaza for our outdoor dining area. Humboldt Bay Fire is working on, um, their memorial installation, and plans have been ordered, and so everything is moving forward. And then lastly, um, Councilmember Arroyo asked for an update on how our cannabis businesses are doing during COVID. And I'm happy to say that they're doing fine. Um, multiple of them have come in to expand into adjacent spaces or new locations. Or to add additional licenses. Um, cannabis was categorized as essential from the beginning, so they've been doing just fine. Um, and on that note, I just want to make sure council knows that, um, staff recently finished. A proposed update to our cannabis code. We sent it to the Coastal Commission for their feedback, and then we'll be taking it to the Planning Commission and then bringing it back to council. Um, and we can go into a broader dive on cannabis at that point. So, um, that's it for my presentation tonight. I have a suggested motion for the bridge program, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All righty, Councilmember Moltin.
I have a question. Uh, it says that businesses must have been in business as of March first, twenty twenty, uh, which is right at the beginning of lockdown. Um, or, you know, with, as somebody who was laid off in the first week of March. Um. But then also must have, uh, twenty percent or more reduction in gross revenue, so if a business started right at the beginning of lockdown. How could they show a reduction in gross revenue compared to not lockdown, or how does that work?
That's a good question. I think, I, the thinking behind having businesses be in business, I. Let me choose my words. Um. If somebody started a business. If somebody started a business after the pandemic started, we kind of feel like they kind of knew what they were getting themselves into. Whereas other businesses were already established and this came out of nowhere, I'm leaning towards giving the funds to businesses that started before the pandemic. But that, you know, whatever council directs us to do.
Oh, you know what, Swan? I was completely reading that backwards. Never mind. This clearly says that they would have had to be in business before lockdown, and I was just reading it backwards. Sorry.
Councilmember Castellano.
Just a quick question. I did ask City Manager Slattery about this, and he replied yes, but I just wanted to clarify for council and the public, it would also be okay if, you know, let's say someone owned the structure of their business and they wanted to use the funds to pay mortgage versus rent. That could be okay with this program?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. This is not just for tenants.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions about the program? All right. Did we have any public comment about this?
No, Mayor, we did not.
All right, I will bring it back for a motion or comments or both. Councilmember Bregel.
Small Business Bridge Program allocating $300,000 to provide rent relief grants to small businesses and nonprofits.
And thank you for putting this together, Director Swan.
Director Swan.
We have a second from Councilmember Castellano, I think. All right.
I have a comment. And just seeing the picture of Kiskanu, I just wanted to give them a little shout out that they're nominated for a Eureka Chamber of Commerce Award. And so good on them for that. I see that Donna Wright is perhaps on the call, so perhaps she could pass along the shout out in our meeting, but that was just an aside. And I love this and thank you so much staff for putting this.
All right. Any other discussion? I think I'm also very excited about this and glad we were able to fit it into this meeting. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bregel. Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much about that. And so now let's check in on the rest of the meeting. It is 9:42. We do, I have been, I've been asked to check in with our city attorney to find out about what our options are for moving the camping ordinance.
So it's entirely in your discretion. We would re-agendize it for adoption either at a special meeting or at your next meeting, if you wish to move it from tonight's consideration.
Okay. City Manager Slattery, do you, did you have any questions about this?
No, no, I just thought that there was a complaint related to this and I didn't know if it was time-sensitive and I wanted to make sure that, you know, City Attorney Black was consulting on that.
So let me clarify that because there's been some confusion. What happened at the December first meeting was that the agenda stated that we were going to introduce the ordinance, but the action indicated in the agenda summary, and the intended action was to adopt the ordinance. And because of that confusion or technical error, the motion to adopt at the December 1st meeting was basically a non-starter. It was null and void, had no force or effect. So that ordinance was never adopted and was never going to be put into full effect. This is a restart of the adoption process. And so what we have is a first reading that occurred on November 17th, and now we're going to have a second reading that occurs on, what would it be, January 19th, I guess, if we do it at the regular meeting. I don't think it's of an urgency nature, so I think it can wait to January 19. But it could also be the subject of a special meeting if that was your choice. I don't particularly recommend that unless you're having a special meeting for some other purpose.
Well, you won't have to twist my arm not to have a special meeting, but I will bring it back to council to see how everybody feels about moving that to the next regularly-agendized meeting. And also I know we're already starting to fill up that meeting as well, so maybe we should look at what's coming up at the next meeting and see if we can do some time management and what we addressed because our meetings have been very important. I'm not saying they aren't important, but they've been maybe a little thicker than we can chew the past several months. All right, we have one other item on the agenda, which is the Richardson Grove Project, and we have 15 minutes. Do we want to move, press forward with that, or do we want to postpone that? Okay, we've got to press forward. It's going to be a brief presentation by Director Gerving, who is always the grand finale at these really fun meetings.
Yeah, the grand finale, right. It will be a brief presentation. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It will be a brief presentation. I'll try to be easy on the numbers too about this. So why are we here? Just to recap, the December 15th meeting, council asked that staff come back with information regarding the Richardson Grove Project that Caltrans has had in the works for quite some time and the potential impact of increased truck traffic from that project on the 101 corridor through Eureka, Broadway, 4th and 5th. So staff has done research in intervening weeks, looked at previous environmental documents, discussed the project with Caltrans. So just briefly, what is the project? A lot of people are familiar with it, but just to clarify, at the very south end of Humboldt County, you know, just a mile away from Mendocino County is where the project would start and it would realign roughly one-mile segment of US 101 where it runs through Richardson Grove State Park. And the point of the project is to allow access by industry-standard-sized trucks that conform to the STA or Surface Transportation Assistance Act. Those trucks are of the same weight limit as California legal trucks. They're just allowed a different overall length and different kingpin to rear axle length, which is a trucking term. In looking into this, it's interesting that the state on their website has a legal truck access page, all the things you'd need to know as a trucking industry professional. And on that page is a page just about getting to Eureka and all of the constraints that 101 through Richardson Grove poses. But as far as the truck traffic impacts on Eureka, Caltrans in 2010 prepared what's called a finding of no significant impact, or FONZI, an environmental document that found truck traffic coming through Richardson Grove would be likely to decline by roughly 12%. Basically, you can fit more cargo in larger trailers, and by achieving that larger volume per trip, you're going to reduce the number of trips. And because of the lack of significant industrial and commercial destinations to the north along 101, you wouldn't see a lot of latent demand that would be, you know, recognized by the project. You've got another STA compliant route on Highway 299 at this point. So the likelihood of traffic diverting over from the I-5 corridor to travel north through Eureka to destinations beyond does seem unlikely. In looking at the documentation regarding the Richardson Grove Project, we find that the the traffic through that corridor, depending upon whether you're looking at peak hour numbers or average daily trip numbers, is anywhere between 15% and 25% of the traffic volumes that we see on Broadway. And of that 15% to 25%, trucks are about 11%. So you're saying, basically you see that the trucks going through Richardson Grove are between 2% and 3% of the overall trips that we see on Broadway. So again, the environmental document forecasted a reduction in trips of about 12%. Even if you didn't see a decrease, even if you saw an increase in truck traffic, you know, even twofold on a 2% or 3% number of what we see on Broadway, it's not going to, in staff's opinion, have a significant impact on safety or other aspects of traffic on Broadway. So that's about it. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them. But staff did review the findings and then environmental document, and while we didn't do a separate analysis, as I mentioned in the agenda summary, the conclusion seemed sound, and we'll leave it at that.
And what I did mean to say before we started too is that we requested this as a traffic safety informational report. It has nothing to do with any kind of, we are not making any decisions about whether or not we support this project. It is strictly informational. So I know a lot of people have reached out about whether or not they think this is a good project, and that's not what we're discussing. We're simply trying to get information about how that will affect our area in Eureka. So I just wanted to clarify that. Councilmember Moulton.
And thank you for that, and thank you for the pointing to resources on the specific information. But just because I was asked, and I have you here, are the larger trucks, are we talking about the ones that are then two trailers long? The folks are asking me, does this mean that we're going to start seeing double-long or triple-long trucks coming through Eureka? Or is it just a larger standard of like one-trailer trucks?
So larger standard trucks, that's one aspect of it. I actually don't know whether there, just one second here, I can find it for us. So there is a California legal double truck and tractor. So while there might be a slightly longer double trailer and tractor combination that would be allowed, there is already a California legal double trailer configuration.
See, may I ask, have any questions for, I almost said Dr. Gerving. You're a doctor and patient. That's what you are. Director Gerving.
Mayor, we did have some members of the public who had asked to speak on this item. I don't know if they're still with us.
Okay.
Our first person is Tom Wheeler.
Oh, did he come in? Are you there, Tom? Yeah, I think he told me he was not going to do it. He sent an email instead.
Our second person is Chris Howard.
Good evening, council. Welcome, Councilman Bauer. Welcome to the life of public service. Very rewarding to all you new council members. My name is Chris Howard. I'm a supervisor in Delnard County and also the Chair of the Delnard County Transportation Commission. Thank you, Mayor Seaman, for clarifying your point tonight. I did not realize that this wasn't going to be a position-taking item on Richardson Grove itself, but just an analysis on the impacts of truck and trailer traffic specific to the Broadway section of Eureka. I will reserve my comments at this time since that does not seem to be the issue here this evening, but encourage if a position is somewhat taken by the council in the near future that it recognize the importance of US Highway 101 and the STA double-A standard to Delnard County and Crescent City, who are your neighbors to the north. That is our only reasonable transportation route south. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our third person who had signed up was Tamara Leighton.
Hi, I am, I was aware that this was not an action item for your meeting tonight, but I did find about it in time to comment. I am the Executive Director of the Delnard Local Transportation Commission, which is the regional transportation planning agency similar to the Humboldt County Association of Governments in Humboldt County. So our region has been working to accomplish basic industry-standard trucking access for over 20 years. And while Richardson Grove is in Humboldt County and certainly not in Eureka, the US Highway 101 belongs to us all and is an essential interregional route for goods movement. Delnord can't meet its good movement goals without standard trucking access at Richardson Grove in the same way that you need our attention to last gen's grade at US Highway 101. So I encourage you to stay focused on the facts about this project, to remember that US Highway 101 belongs to us all and that the limitations at Richardson Grove impact us all. Just for your future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all of the members of the public who had asked to speak on this item.
All right. So I'll bring it back for comments. Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you, and it's wonderful to put names and faces together with some of our neighbors to the north. So thank you for coming to speak on this at this hour. I want to apologize for the way in which this came forward being confusing perhaps to many people because we got a lot of communications about this, and I think I brought it up as an agenda item for information for staff to bring back pertaining to Eureka and our traffic impacts on Broadway as we're discussing really the traffic safety and volumes of traffic and visibility issues on Broadway. Right now, we're talking about that with Caltrans and amongst ourselves and with our staff, and so I wanted to understand how this fitted to the mix. But it was partly spurred by the fact that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors was considering revising, potentially revising their position, and I wanted to see if this was the right time for us to learn more about the topic and, you know, collaborate more with our supervisors. So anyway, I appreciate staff bringing the information forward. I would still like to understand as we consider different project alternatives for both short-term and long-term, you know, improvements around Eureka, not only on Broadway but on other arterial streets and, you know, collectors. I'd like to understand, you know, how, if at all, do STA trucks factor in? I know they have a wider wheelbase, they're bigger. You know, that's something I just frankly don't understand because we haven't had them yet because they infrequently are in the community. So I think I simply wanted some more information and I appreciate staff aiming to meet that. And sorry for raising some hackles, but this has been helpful for me because it helped me realize that Supervisor Virginia Bass would really like to be part of our conversations about safety, traffic safety in Eureka in particular. And so Mayor Seaman, as you're putting together your list of stakeholders.
I might have, of course, already.
Okay, great. And she would also like to be part of any ongoing conversations about short-term improvements with Caltrans. So just relaying that, she would really like to be involved. And this has helped open that particular door. I know sometimes we only focus on our jurisdiction and they focus on their jurisdiction, and this is where I think we could work more together. So this is my questions and I appreciate it. I did get a report from California, excuse me, Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, projects, one of those two. Thank you. And they they really analyzed it somewhat differently. But at this time, I don't think that that's something I need to go in. But at this time, I don't think that that's something I need to go into in this meeting or get more information about until we have a project that we're, we're looking into further.
I just have one, based on that comment, I have one question and I don't know if you know this, Director Gervin, but I would believe that we probably do have STA sized trucks come into Eureka. They just come in from 299 and not from Richardson's Grove. So.
That's, that's correct. We do. It's, it's a less efficient route, you know, for the typical route coming up from the Bay Area. I can tell you anecdotally, we've had supply chain issues for even for emergency projects with pipe that we had fabricated in Alabama. They had to get shipped to a yard in Richmond and sit there for a few days and transferred to smaller trucks to come up to Humboldt County. So it, it is a problem, but as far as truck access goes, but we do have STA trucks here. Slightly different length, but again, the same weight. And, and we really don't believe that the change in this route, while becoming more efficient for goods movement, that it would have any meaningful impact on traffic or safety on the 101 corridor through the city.
It is 10 o'clock on the dot. So at this point, I want to remind everybody, we do have, I do believe our city manager had a very brief update on strategic visioning and we have council reports. How do you, how are you all feeling? What do you want to do with that? Do we want to do city manager? And then just if you want to make a council report so everybody doesn't check in, I'll take feedback. We do both of those next meeting?
I was going to move extension of the meeting for 15 minutes.
Council, can we get through council reports in 15 minutes, do you think? I'm teasing.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have 15 minutes. I just wanted to make sure if we need anything, to know anything about strategic visioning that might be timely, that city manager has a chance to say it. So you are on. It is now 10:01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Just one other quick brief update. I just want to remind all council as well as the public that on Thursday night, there's the broadband meeting at five o'clock. And it should be very intriguing. So I encourage anybody still here to, to come. The strategic visioning, I just want to give a brief update. I know Councilmember Bauer had requested to push it back. Unfortunately, we've, the consultants don't have the availability in, in, in March, but he did say he'd still be able to participate on the fifth. So the, the dates for the strategic visioning are going to be on Friday, February 5th, Friday, the 12th, Friday, the 19th and Friday, February 26th. The council commitment at those times will be, and the public portion of these meetings will start at one o'clock. And on the fifth will be for four hours. On the 12th will be for six hours. On the 19th will be for two hours of meeting time. And on the 26th, it'll be for two hours of meeting time. So we're putting together a professional services agreement. We'll get that going and just wanted to make sure that was on your calendars and notify the public that they are able to attend. And that's all I have. Mayor Seaman.
Thank you very much. I think we're all looking forward to that. So I will go and first I will ask, is there anybody who has anything for council reports that they want to make sure that they say? I'll let you raise your hand and call on you first. Councilmember Castellano.
Did we vote on extension?
Oh, did we vote on it? Oh, shoot. Now we made a motion in a second, right?
I, I had made an assumption of a unanimous yes.
I felt like we had that consensus. I wish we could just do that. Okay, thank you.
I wish staff could just read our minds more often. That'd be so cool.
Slippery slope, Councilmember. Okay. I'll be quick. Let's see, I won't talk too much about it, but I did host the Promenade of Dreams, which was really fun. And thanks, Councilmember Araya, for coming out in your lit up bike caravan. And I volunteered at St. Vincent de Paul along with Councilmember Burgel, who was dressed way more festively than I was and was very fun. I also just want to shine a quick light on the, there are some folks who are volunteering like three, four, five days a week at St. Vincent de Paul, who are just like phenomenal people, Georgia, Jackie, Russell, like you're feeding so many people in our community and like working so hard to make sure that no one is unfed. So thank you for that. Not enough can be said about them. And then just in terms of items, I just wanted, a few folks have mentioned, mentioned to me that just challenge, that it would be nice to be able to call in during the meeting to make comments. I don't think we need to solve that, but I don't know, I just want to bring that up. I don't know if other folks are getting that feedback to be able to call, sorry, to call in like as the meeting's happening. You know, I know some communities are doing it. And I don't want all the burden to fall on Assistant City Manager Powell. So I'm not sure, you know, how realistic it is, but I just am curious if it may allow for better access. Fireworks, I'm still hearing about fireworks. And I know we've already slated it to be on an agenda, but just want to keep bringing it up. And then I'm getting a lot of emails about trash and people brought it up tonight too. And so it is something that, you know, I feel like I would like for us to put some time into, you know, and I know that staff's already working on it, but it seems worthwhile of really investing a little more council's time into addressing trash in Eureka. So I'm just curious if other council members are in agreement with that or having feedback about that.
Oh, wait, I think we're not discussing it. You guys all ponder that. And just to bring it back to another meeting.
Yes, if you're in agreement with that aspect of it.
Would you like to bring it back to discuss at another meeting, but probably not the next one because it's already overbooked?
No. But you want to talk trash?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm getting a lot of those comments as well.
That's all.
City manager Slattery.
Just wondering in what way, how do you want that set up, Councilman, Councilano?
Well, I would like either a report on things that are happening with the, maybe with the capacity to give input for making some additional changes or plans. But could I possibly think about that some more? You know, I, I don't know what the best way to do it would be, but maybe like a report with the capacity to give input is what I'm thinking.
Sounds good.
Sometimes we just want the opportunity to talk about an issue together without any specific thing in mind ahead of time, I think. All right. Is that all for you, Councilmember Castellano? Does anybody else have anything pressing to report? Councilmember Araya.
So Humboldt Transit Authority is trying out a pilot program of adding a transit stop in Samoa. It's specifically to help serve the new housing that has been constructed by Danco. There are many, many, many units that are being filled right now. And previously no transit, but it hasn't really been as well advertised as it could be. So if you know folks who live there or yeah, if any of the folks you interact with are able to use that route, that will ensure its survival if it is used. So in whatever way we can, mostly word of mouth, right now I'm asking folks to help get the word out. And as soon as there are flyers or other materials, I'll also share those. I realize it's not in Eureka city limits, but it is helping to ensure that people are well connected by transit routes in our greater Eureka Humboldt Bay Area community.
Well, and tonight they voted to see if there'll be a big charter school out there too. So high school kind of school. So that might be a potential for more writers. Councilmember Moulton.
This might be a bit personal, but I have just completed, I've served as the president of Kinetic Universe for many, many years and on the board for 11 years. And I have just, we have just completed a lengthy and detailed transition process and I'm officially retired and no longer a part of that board. But I wanted to shout out to the new folks that are running stuff over there. They're doing, we did an amazing job in the transition. And I'm really looking forward to seeing all the great stuff that they're going to do going forward. And I also wanted to just point out that a lot of nonprofits really rely, like Kinetic Universe, really rely on event income. And without being able to sell beer at Halberston Park, things like the Kinetic Museum need extra support and need extra like love in these, these off times. So if there is a particular thing that you really enjoy that happens, you know, maybe get in touch with that organization and see if there's a way that you can support it, even though these nonprofits don't have the event fundraisers that they normally have.
Thank you very much and congratulations. I believe roller derby and kinetic sculpture race are two great practice areas to come into city government. They both kind of involve a lot of chaos and conflict.
They're both the intersection of what you might think of as disparate populations.
But also.
Come together.
They're all also amazing. All right. Anybody else have anything that they wanted to add? If not.
Thank you for your glorious service, Katie Moulton.
Queen paint paints a lot.
Queen, lot of paint buckets, if you ask.
Sorry. And 10:10, you know, we have five minutes to kill unless y'all think we can leave early. I don't hear any complaints about adjournings. So we will see you at the broadband meeting on Thursday, I hope. Oh, wait, you're pointing at something, Natalie. Did somebody want some?
I saw Scott unmute, so.
Oh.
I saw you unmute. I wanted to make sure you were included.
Bye. Are we all good?
Do adjourn or we just?
Evening.
We're adjourned.